Do you want to give us assistance in reducing our water consumption? Well, really, we're...
We'll start early. I don't have my screen on. Is it not on? Call to order the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, July 15th at 6:30 PM. Public and board members, please silent. Take this opportunity to silence your cell phones. I know, I sound like that camel at the theater, right? I went to see a show and it was in there.
Whoop whoop.
Yeah, whoop whoop. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, a mineral, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice President Small.
Here.
Director Duncan.
Here.
President Hunt.
Here.
Director Kelson.
Here.
Director Kellogg.
Here.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number two, approval of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Is it corrected or...
Yeah.
There is a correction.
There was a cor... Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Forgot about the correction.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that, too, after you make the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Well, you want to take some... You want to pull it off of the consent calendar?
No, I just want to speak to it before we vote on it.
We only have one item. Go ahead.
I'd like to point out on page three, Director Kellogg announced he would like to make a motion to move agenda item seven, committee reports of head of old business on the agenda. He feels important for the public to hear the committee reports beforehand, reports influence other. Now, according to Roberts Rules of Order, if... And I didn't even quite get that motion made with you hitting the mallet. It should have been waited to see if there was a second to the motion, and then if it went, if nobody's seconded it, we would have gone.
Okay. Chris, are you going to be making a correction to the minutes?
No. I said I was going to comment, and I have commented.
You save your comments for director comments. This is not a time for comments on minutes.
No, you're a presiding officer. Don't get confused with being a small dictator tonight, okay?
And what makes you think in Roberts Rules of Orders that it gives you the privilege of doing that?
Doug?
It does.
Where?
If he wants to comment on something, he can.
No, he can't. He can comment about things that are on the agenda, for example. He can't comment about things that are not on the agenda, right?
But is it an error of the agenda?
Then say there's an error. An error in the agenda?
An error.
An error was in your conduction of the meeting.
You can make that as a comment. You should have brought it up and had it put on the agenda to discuss tonight. Why didn't you do that, Director Kellogg?
Because it isn't necessary to do that.
Well, yes, it is, because you aren't going to get to talk about it tonight. You may talk about it in director comments. You can't move your director comments to the front of the meeting.
I just talked about it, and you just made your reply.
Excellent. All those in favor of approving the motion as made, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I heard four votes for aye. There's an abstain... Abstination from apparently Director Kellogg, unless you would like to vote?
Yeah, I'll vote with understanding that I feel that I was right.
Well, don't give a caveat. Vote or don't vote.
I vote yes.
Good, we're all in agreement. Public participation. This is the point where the public will be given an opportunity to speak to the board for items that are not on the agenda.
Question, would that include the director?
No.
You sure? Directors aren't public?
I believe a director can...
Move to the public.
Oh, yes. I mean, I thought I was asking you, I thought you were asking if the director was excluded.
No, no, no. I meant, can the director talk during this period?
Sure.
Okay, so that's a good time to do something.
That's another good time to do it. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's appropriate if they're going to speak as a member of the public and they step down as a director and they speak as a public.
Go to the podium, speak as a public, yeah.
That's the proper way to do it.
I looked into that before.
Sounds good.
I just answered it. I didn't understand your...
I thought it was... I thought I was right.
Well, Bill has done it before.
Yeah, I know he had. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, okay. So, into the... Into the public participation, of which Bill may now choose to participate. We are going to allow you to bring up items that are not on the agenda. If there's something that's scheduled in the agenda, you'll have chances for public participation at that time. And each person will be limited to five minutes by the old hourglass here. And at this point, I'll ask if any public would like to make a statement or questions or bring something up.
Thanks for asking, President Hunt. Yes, my name is Ward Habril, and at this point, I'm speaking on behalf of the Paradise Garden Club, which would like to express its deepest thanks for the guest speaker presentation made by PID in Cedar Creek Monday at the Paradise Garden Club. This was one of our best-attended meetings. It was also one that covered a topic of deep interest to us, and that's water conservation. We feel that our garden club is one of the leader... Leaders in our district, Debut's district, which covers over five counties, in regards to how we have accepted responsibility as gardeners to see what we can do to keep our yards beautiful and not waste water at the same time. We believe that we're succeeding in that, and we believe that we've been helped by that because of the partnering we have from PID and the resources provided such as Mark Dale and Mickey Rich. Like I said, it was one of our best-attended meetings. It also includes... Our club also includes people that don't live within PID district, people from Magalia, people from Del Oro, that is, and people from down in the valley, several of which have commented. In fact, I got feedback twice today, this afternoon, from people that said... Should we pause for a minute?
Apparently, some people didn't decide to silence their phones.
Including a couple of people that said, "I wish I lived where we had PID." I thought that was a pretty good endorsement personally, and frankly, you know, I know on behalf of the club, we say thank you for our partnership and how well we're getting along together and the differences that we're able to make, and personally as well, because I feel that we've gotten a great deal of cooperation. That's my personal opinion. But speaking on behalf as a member of the garden club, it's been very effective, and I think that we are really, truly setting an example of what we can do in a way of keeping our yards presentable and attractive and not waste a lot of water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Ward.
Any other public participation? Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Barry Bunty, and I'm a resident of Paradise. I just have a question. I believe today was the day that a report was due to the state water board by PID on our performance for June. If that report has been completed, is that going to be available to the public?
I believe that those reports are always available to the public once they're submitted. Have we submitted our report?
We... I'm sure we've submitted our report. Jim Passanese does that. It's completely online.
Is it online?
Completely online.
Is it on the website?
Pardon?
Is it on our website?
Not on our website. We have to submit it onto their form online, so it's nothing more. We fill in the blanks, and then it gets submitted to them. If you have any questions about the questions they answer, we can get you that information. But we don't really have a report that we print.
You don't really have a paper document?
No.
Or a...
We file online.
Can you print that off?
Possibly. Do you have my email address? Email me, I'll see if I can get your copy.
I'll send you an email.
Okay.
I do have a follow-up to that also.
Well, just, you know, I allowed a question because it was easy and simple, but we won't get into any discussion about what you're doing, but go ahead and try.
Just a follow-up to the same question.
Okay.
When the state responds, will they respond in the same manner? And if so, will that be publicly available?
Oh, then you'll have to ask Governor Brown.
I should ask you. You guys are in charge here.
Yeah, we don't have a...
Somebody ought to know the procedure.
Do you have an answer for that?
They won't respond.
Oh, okay.
It's one-way communication unless we're doing something wrong.
You won't maybe get an informational letter?
I hope not. Hope to get nothing.
No news is good news.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other public participants? Bill, I'll give you a special invitation. Would you like to have time now?
No. I thought it should be carried by Roberts Rules of Order, and I paid my comment, and Doug's backed it up. I don't think there's any reason for me to say anything more.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. By the way, I want public to know, and board members, that when we get into the new business items, you know, the agenda item procedure is published on the back of our agenda. And it says what steps we take to properly go through and conduct our business. For example, the president of the board announces the opening of the agenda item. Person presenting the agenda item will provide more descriptive information about it. And then the next step, item three, actually now, before we go to item three, this is in kind of in regard to what had happened in the last meeting, I'm going to ask if there are any committee reports in regard to that subject matter. So, the committees may have met on it, you know, two weeks before, and that's going to be their opportunity to bring up their committee action and any recommendations they have. Then we're going to go into the staff for their input, and then the board members will ask questions and get clarification and discuss it. Then I'll turn it to public, then it comes back to the board, then I return it to the public, and then it comes back to the board. Okay, so that little caveat there's in between two and three is where I'm going to insert that, so the committee chairs have an opportunity to give their report prior to us getting into the meat and potatoes of any particular item there. Approval of checks, of June checks. Consider the approval of those June checks and allocating authority to spend some more money. How about SEP? SEP, do you have any items that you would like to bring up?
Well, yes, I do, Ken.
Okay.
In fact, I finished up the last of them right here. Okay, so let's go back to... Should be the first one. iPad page 16. The Aqua Hawk, the customization, was that so that we could utilize more information out of there? It was the $2,500 block.
Which one is it?
Aqua Hawk customization.
Oh, that was for our letters. Remember when the board adopted the conservation and we set the 50%?
Gotcha.
They're developing the letters, and that was the setup for that.
Okay, thanks. iPad page 19, Concepts and Controls. Is that the final payment on the pump station two upgrade?
Yeah.
I assume Concepts and Controls was the electronics. Wasn't it the controller?
That was the company name.
Yeah, but there's...
The one that did all the programming and so...
The controller. It basically the programming for the controller.
That was actually the... Wasn't that the release of the fullback money? Retention?
That was it. So, it should be the final... That's the final payment. Yeah, that was my... Yeah, okay. Okay. And answer is that. iPad page 24, Knife River Construction, which I think goes on to... I don't know, maybe it doesn't go on. Was that our share of cost for the DeMille job? DeMille Harrison? Knife River, I assume, is providing the... Or was that just our fill-in?
That's the film.
Dirt and...
Yeah, that's material bought, purchased from them.
For the fill-in of what we're doing.
Specifically for that job.
Yeah. So, it's not a share, it's for our work.
Because PG&E is paying for the overlay.
They gave money to the town, the town paid for whatever it takes.
Yeah, basically, yeah. So, we're not paying for the overlay. And the same thing, iPad page 26, from North State, I assume was pretty much about the same stuff.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, actual material, cold makes.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know if we were paying for any of the actual, whatever it is, cost of the actual paving material.
Nope.
Yeah, okay, I didn't think so. Okay. iPad page page 29, Pearson Road Collision. Did we have a boo-boo?
We had a boo-boo.
Okay.
And I can report that it was immediately reported, handled correctly, nobody was hurt.
Okay, great.
It was PID to PID vehicle.
Okay.
Does in... Our insurance doesn't pay for it, then?
Or do we... Or do we not want them to pay for it, more likely?
It doesn't really matter. Were we filing one on that one, Georgine?
Isn't it a $10,000 deductible anyways?
Yeah, I think that...
For vehicle, yeah, that's right.
Well, I know on personal, if you hit your own car with another car, you aren't covered.
Right. I experienced that.
I haven't yet.
Okay, iPad page 32, the NPDS permit application fee. Theoretically, is that our last one? If the...
No.
Or should we have one more next year? Maybe?
We've got... See, we have a... We have a permit for discharge for activities in the distribution, and we've been working on an update to that. And I'm not sure if that's that one or the treatment plant one.
Okay. And I think that was it for me. Yes, that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to you, Larry.
Me?
Okay.
Let's see, page... The chlorine on the... On the page 17, American Integrated Services.
Yes.
How much is that? How... Quality-wise?
That was to fill the new tanks.
Which are how big?
And I think that was... I think it was 20,000 gallons.
And how long do you think that lasted?
I don't remember.
I know it's new.
They're going to start filling every month, sort of to a low spot, so I think they have...
But it won't be as much.
That was just first... That was just first-time fill.
Yeah.
First fill, okay. On page 18, check to the AT&amp;T.
Oh, wait. Let's go back to that one.
Sure.
The American Integrated Services, no, that's... That is not the purchase of chlorine.
Oh, it is. What is it?
That is the programming that you approved and the equipment. It's equipment for that project, not...
Oh, it's a program.
Not bleach itself.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, page 18, you have two checks to AT&amp;T written on the same day, and I was wondering why. Why do we do two checks? I just wonder, what is the cost of writing a check? I don't know.
Separate bills.
Yeah, separate bills, I'd be my guess.
I pay all my 18...
I don't know why they got written on... I know that we had a lot of checks written on 6/30 because of the cutoff.
The cutoff.
And so...
So, it may have been something caught later.
It was too different. Like, we had just gotten two of the AT&amp;T bills in, so we had another check for those two, but they were all run on the same kind of check run as our 6/30.
Okay. On page 20, to employee, there's physical DMV and pre-employment. How... Is that one person? $200 and some dollars?
Two. Three.
I think so.
Yeah.
For two?
For one.
For one? Wow. Okay.
That does the physicals, all of the drug tests, all the blood work, it does it all.
So, a lot, okay.
And gives us a nice file.
Okay. And on the same page, Eric Hagenbart pumped the lake septic tank. Is that one tank, or do we have more than one up there?
We have one really big tank. All of the outhouses that are pumped are delivered to a septic tank and then leached out.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not sure if the lake house is connected to the same tank or not. We may have two.
Two, right. It's a lot of money, I just... For pumping one tank, that's the reason I wondered.
It's a big tank.
Yeah, it's a big tank, okay. The... Let's see, on page 22, Gregory Denton. Who is he and what was it? And what is it? What is a blowgun? Are we arming our employees?
Well, it's got a rubber nozzle on it, so they're safe.
So, they're safe.
It's an air gun, I think.
Who is he? Is this a vendor or a person?
Can't answer that one. Put a markup for something, staff.
Okay, page...
It's full if he's a vendor and a person.
What?
It's full if he's a vendor and a person.
Right, okay. On the same page, Hertz.
Hertz.
Yeah, we rented a hammer and an excavator.
A rammer.
A rammer and an excavator? For what job was that?
That's going to be for the DeMille job there.
DeMille also, okay. He didn't say. I also, too, you know, I think it'd be helpful, if possible, you know, when we have a deposit and then a refund on a job, if we could put down what the job is, that way we... You know, can that fit in there? Not in this one, but in a... When we do a... When we... Later on, I see one where we do a deposit and then a refund.
All the deposits that we do are for meter installs, right?
For what?
Meter installs.
Oh, they are? Oh, we don't have it? Do we don't have deposits for other stuff?
Rarely.
Rarely?
Yeah.
Okay, right. But it would...
Yeah, we'll do tie-ins for commercial projects, but we haven't had one of those since Big Five.
Is it possible to put the job location in here so that we know what's going on?
I don't know if we have enough room, because a lot of these...
If we do, I... It would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay, on page... Oh, that DeMille, I've already got the answer. I got that. I was asking how far we were. How far... How much do we owe on the... Is DeMille almost 100% complete?
No.
Oh.
Pipeline is almost, but we've got lots of services to do.
Services, okay, right. And how many... How many... That was 4,000 feet?
I think so, yeah.
Right, okay. On page 29, Chamber of Commerce, $500. Did we get our money's worth?
Of course.
Yeah, we went that route as for partying the park sponsorship, and by being a sponsor, we got additional booth spots. It was cheaper to be a sponsor and get six booth spots than it would have been to rent three, and it was the same price or maybe less to be a sponsor and get six or five? Six.
Okay. Let's see. Got that done. On page 34, Town of Paradise, materials, $2,000. What are we buying from the town?
Got me on that one.
Okay, that's all I have. Post rock? That wasn't what I...
No. We didn't buy it from them.
No, I was wondering if we attributed some dollars to that.
No, this says material that we bought from the town.
No, I know we had plenty of the post rock, and it was pretty much a freebie, so...
Yeah, that was... Cost us $300.
Okay. Doug, do you have any items you'd like to bring up?
All that I have highlighted here have already been discussed, but on page 16 has to do with the Aqua Hawk. That's still costing us 10 cents a month per meter, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and so we paid twice in this particular month, not counting what SEP was asking on the $2,500, but we had $1,059 and $1,078, two different dates, as I see here, month apart. But anyway, it was still costing...
The reason why is because we had a cutoff of the 6/30. We wanted to pay all of them. We wanted to pay as much as we could as of 6/30 so it didn't carry into the fiscal year.
Right, yeah, good. Yeah, I got a highlight here, because I asked this time every time, the excavator from Hertz Riddle, and I was just looking at it, Larry asked about that one, or the rammer. Did they just leave that here, pick it up, or do they bring it back and forth every week? You're getting a very good price on it if I...
It stays at the job site. It stays on the job site.
It just left on the job site. And that's somewhat... Do they charge by the hour or by the month?
There's weekly rates and there's monthly rates.
Monthly rates are cheaper than the weekly rates.
Yes.
And we generally have it for a month, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, as I've mentioned before, that would be $150,000, maybe more.
I think a lot more than that.
Without looking at it, you know, that'd be really good. And then I also asked, in a different place that I had it highlighted here, when we have in here from State of California Development Office, and it's state withholding tax, we're actually taking that out of a paycheck for the employee, and then we're rewriting a check to the state, right?
That's correct.
Does that go back in as... How... It's still costing us the same, it's just the state gets the top of it. I answered my own question. I think that's all that I have. President Hunt.
Thank you. Director Kellogg?
On page 41, 2011 refinance, $400,000.
Yeah. So, we paid off the 2011 refinance this year. That was the principal payment that was due on that... On that last payment.
Is that... Now, that's paid off now with this $400,000?
Correct.
And Davis Gunn Street, right beneath it?
Yep.
It didn't pay it off, it's just a regular payment?
Correct.
And then, T... And then, T, Treatment Plant Enlargement, we're still paying for that evidently, 518,000?
That one's done, that one's paid off.
Huh?
That one we paid off.
You, we paid that off now this month?
This year, this is all this year, so.
Oh, this is all this year?
7/114 to 6/3015.
That's the annual one.
Okay, so this is the annual summary then?
Yep.
So we paid off the refinance and we paid off the old plant enlargement?
Correct.
I can't find the listing of checks by when they were paid, you know, I've asked for before in a summary of checks. Did I just not find, look at the right page?
When they're paid?
Yeah, the dates when they're paid, when they're submitted, when they're paid.
Page 11, I've had page 11.
Page 11?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, I see why I didn't look, because of the charts. It'd just take me a minute to review. So, for the audience, it's like invoice date was June the 19th and it was paid on June the 19th. That's pretty quick for our fees with the Aqua.
All those are paid as soon as payroll is processed.
Okay, some of them are 20 days old, but all within 30 days I noticed.
With payroll is paid immediately.
And then it shows the percentages of which were the biggest ones that we paid. Who is F TJ Corporation account?
That's who is our retirement account provider.
Okay. And. Knife Supply, is that, we've been doing enough construction work out in the field?
Thanks, River.
Mm-hmm. To buy that much material?
Yep.
That's basically all the mill project, though.
Okay, that's all my questions I have, thank you for the report, I just didn't find, didn't walk right by it.
Thank you, I have no questions, everybody hit all of the topics. And do we have a motion?
I move approval of general fund checks, numbers, 2, 2, 4-804-8 through 4-8199 for the month of June 2015 totaling $465,638.98. Exclusively voided checks, numbers 4-8174, 4-8052, 4-8086 and 4-8093, and authorizing similar amount allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board approval items during the month of July 2015.
Second.
Any further discussion amongst the board? Does the public have any comments in regard to our droll paying of bills? There being none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, it passes 5-0. We will move to new business.
Like to make a motion at this time? Like to have the, the committee that met today, the Finance Committee, report before we go into the review of our employees.
Finance Committee didn't meet today.
It didn't? What committee met this morning?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Not aware of any.
It was the Financial Department, it was doing the support of training.
Oh, he's doing training, okay, I'm sorry. But it does have the Finance Committee's report here, didn't?
We had that last, that was last month.
Last month, not?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
It's on July 15th on this, I have it right here, it says Committee Reports Number 8, Finance Committee.
You.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, we were gonna report on it, but we met in, we met last month.
Okay, but I, what I'm asking for is because we're gonna review Kevin, I'd like to know, or at least be informed before we go into the committee, be in the closed session in the meeting, that this information be provided to all the directors. Two directors are aware of whatever the Finance Committee did, and I'd just like to have that committee's report before we go in.
And before we go into closed session, we will.
We will do it.
Okay.
That was the change that he had, that if, if there's something on the agenda, that the committee will report before the gen, agenda item is addressed.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a change, Bill, so that it gets in there. And then next month I'm gonna put it on the agenda for us to discuss and consider making it permanent.
Okay.
Item 6A, PID, Town Council Meeting, Manager Barber, would you like to introduce this?
Yeah, the, you all agreed to have a co-meeting with Town of Paradise on August 4th, I believe, and the agenda's being formulated and it's gonna be formulated pretty quickly. So I wanted to make sure the board had a chance to tell me any items of interest they may want to have agendized for that meeting. We were gonna try and talk about the hydrant fund, other issues related to our relationship with the town, but I wanted you guys to have a chance, if you have an issue you wanna talk about, to let me know so that we can get it on the agenda.
Do you know what is on the agenda so far, other than the two you just mentioned?
About that agreement, remember the back and forth on.
Oh, the paving agreement, yeah, remember the paving.
Oh, is that gonna be on there?
That'll be on the agenda.
It will.
We might lower it, you know.
Your proposal was not accepted, I don't think.
I don't like to hear that the paving thing's gonna be on the agenda, that's been a point of contention.
They did, they did, they didn't accept it, or is that what you said?
I don't think we made a proposal, I think we responded to their.
We, we agreed to pay.
You approved a much, yeah.
25%?
25%.
That was, that was.
Right, so we didn't make that proposal, they made the proposal, we just, we said, we said no.
They made 50-50.
It was 50-50, it was before the board. This board approved going back with 25, 75, 25 for PID, 75 for the town. The town has not accepted that.
Was it a percent? I thought it was a dollar amount.
Well, it wasn't, it was 50% of the estimated amount.
Right, okay.
I would wonder, I'm sort of curious what the town's looking at for sewers in the future. And I have some suggestions about, it's come out of the wetlands research that I've done, about having smaller sewage things spread out through the town with small wetlands attached. It's being done all over the world, and it might be a way for the town to actually tackle the sewage problem. It is an ongoing one. We're the largest community in the country that doesn't have any kind of sewage, it's all on septic tanks.
Okay, I'll put it, I'll ask for a sewer update.
Great, that's what I was gonna say, yeah, 'cause we wanna know what their plans are.
Yeah, let's ask for a gray water update, find out if they're getting any activity on it.
I was gonna ask them, I think last, I think it was last night, they talked about new construction standards relative to landscaping, and I haven't heard the results, and maybe we can have that as a topic.
That sounds good.
I think we ought to talk about Skyway, too. Might as well have something exciting.
What about, oh, you mean the.
Pro's and cons.
Of the decreasing the lanes?
Right.
All right, that's, it's done. There were pros.
It's done, well, there's, things can be undone, you know. When I came here.
I'd sure like to see their pros list on that one, yeah, that would be good.
When we came, when I came here, there was di, diagonal parking on Skyway.
Can I tone it down to a, a report on how well the Skyway project is doing?
That might, maybe that's.
I think that, that, that would be good.
That's awfully diplomatic.
Statistics.
We might get more of the volumes if we say pros and cons, though.
Well, it's a jointly constructed, so keep in mind, these are your requests. I'll be calling Lauren with your, so I, I can't guarantee they're gonna want it on the agenda also.
All they, all they.
I think, to be polite, we shouldn't put it on there, we don't wanna be harassing them, we wanna be cooperating with them. Everybody, let the citizens of the town harass them over.
I, I think it might come out a positive report. They've had more accidents.
And they're slower speeds.
But less physical injury, yeah.
Less damage, that's.
That's what I think, but I'm not sure, 'cause I haven't really seen anything official.
But I think it's okay to ask them, because you as, as public official, people like to give you their opinions of things happening, and you should hear the facts.
Right.
I.
I'm reporting, I think it'd be.
Yeah, I, I think we should address the drought in general with them. What we're doing, what they're doing, make sure we're on the same page, are we, are we at cross purposes? Are we, are we saying different things? Not that I think we are.
Yeah, that, that's good to make sure it's on there, I, I had intended on giving them an update on our side, but it's probably good.
I think they, that was one of the things they wanted to put on there for sure, anyway, the drought.
Yeah, and they, we've been talking a lot, they've been doing a lot as an agency trying to respond, so it'd be good for you guys to do that.
Let them, let them know that, and I don't know if other directors have received inquiries about why we are allowing the overwatering of those pots of plants that are, you know, staged on the sidewalks out there. I had somebody interrupt my, my breakfast in a restaurant the other day to ask me that.
Overwatering?
Yeah, because they can see the water, you know, they're, they're all hand-watered, right?
I don't know.
They are. Whether they're hand-watered with a hose or a bucket, I don't know, but then it, you know, it goes down through and, and it escapes out and runs.
Oh, it doesn't overflow?
A bit of excess, no, well, I don't think so.
Cause it's got a hole in it, yeah.
Yeah, and just, just so they know that there's visibility with that, and some people get cranky about it. But I understand from what I've heard is that the individual storefront owners took on the responsibility of watering the, whatever the plant container is, for the privilege of having it there to help decorate their area, so they're, they're committed to helping to keep it up and water it. And it would be, just in case, maybe they're getting questions.
I'd like to comment to that. I think what's happened is the town has taken a water truck and gone down the road and waters it maybe once a week or every 10 days because they fill it up and the soil inside it's drained and keep them alive. If you just put a gallon, a bucket a day, you'd have to put a bucket a day. I had, oh, come on, Mendon called me about this, and he wanted to talk to Ward about it, and he was quite upset about the idea that the property owners were going to, the people have the stores, we're gonna water them this way, he said, well, the trees will die. All that, it's gonna die, it needs to be watered differently. And evidently, he must've talked to somebody in the town, and then the water truck goes by and waters it, and if you're gonna use a water truck, you're gonna fill it up all the way.
Oh, so they've changed, the, the town is watering.
Yeah, they're making sure those plants survive.
Okay, so we'll find out, we'll find out what that, what they're doing there. They wanna make sure that, that investment in bushes and trees aren't lost.
And while they're doing it, I don't need to make that comment.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
You got it all down?
Do we have any public input? Oh, we do. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you again. Maybe this is just a caution. Look, as a board and as a management, you're far ahead when it comes to respecting this town compared to the way the board and the town is managed. So, here's the caution, let's not be arrogant about how well we do what we do here and how poorly they do what they do there. And maybe with the example that we can set, excuse me for we-ing, I'm not a we, I'm a citizen.
That's a, that's a we.
Okay, yeah, we work together on some things. That, that maybe some of it would rub off to see some of the things that we've done. For instance, how you communicate with the public. The town doesn't have a very good reputation doing that, you know, they read something in the Post and suddenly it's like they're on the phones, and then somebody at the other end of the line has to correct what they read because they misread something or it didn't come out clear or what have you, and there's a lot of misunderstanding about that. We don't get that so much with any communication that comes from this group. So this is just a little bit of a caution. The second part is about the irrigation issues that we have because the garden club was responsible for the planting maintenance at the triangles of Elliott and Foster, and the town has still not responded as to whether or not those two irrigation systems have been repaired and are working correctly. Now, we've had the same problem with the county and the mound at the library, which we also maintain, for about four months of back and forth, back and forth. They finally sent somebody who actually knew something about irrigation, dug the whole thing up and said, this was done wrong in the first place, we're gonna change this, we're putting in new control valves and new heads, and they did it. So I know it's possible to somehow get through to somebody that can make a decision, assign the work, and then have it effective. Our alternative, the garden club's alternative to the town was, we will hard escape most of what is in those triangles except for the older plants that are there. That's not unacceptable, at least to Mark, the engineer, because they've added this other town beautification by the sidewalk pots. So that may be a balance that we end up with. But as far as our maintenance on the mounds, we will clean them, but the plantings that we would normally do without knowing some, somehow that they've done something to solve the irrigation problems, we, we are pretty much hands-off on those, just so you're up to date.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Lauren Harvey. I'm told, I'm told by the mayor that, that there, there is a lot more accidents and, but there's less maiming and killing of folks on Skyway, so they're, they're, they're happy with that. But they told me personally that I should wait for the 10 years to find out how the Skyway project's gonna do. But it's, it's got more accidents as it stands right now. But the thing that I would like to see put on the, put on the agenda is, how about we ask them to waive the fee on the, on the gray water recycling, because it's, they wanna charge $91 or something to allow you to put a, put a pipe in the ground, an inch or so underground and, and water your stuff with your wash machine water, and I think if they were in the spirit of the drought, which by the way, all the newspapers and TV reports say we're gonna have an extra heavy rain this year, but, but anyway, in light of the drought, I think they oughta waive that fee, so maybe we should ask them that, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Any other public comments? There being none, back to the board.
On that Skyway, make sure, bring up the, the watering of the plants, too, on that Skyway project.
Well, that'll come under the drought update.
Oh, it will, okay.
I, I'd like to comment. In my inspection this morning of the grounds here, we don't do as good a job as you're talking about the town. I found seedlings underneath the trees that hadn't been taken out right over there. Half of the things, or several of them were dead. There's a couple of dead plants in front of the office, the grounds aren't taken care of here, the water and so forth. And then if you go over where the plantings are on the banks, we're overwhelmed up on the top with weeds that should've been sprayed out some time ago. We have Scotch brom growing over there, home poison oak just out here next to the rental house and behind it, next to our fence is a clump of poison oak, and there's more Scotch brom. And then if you go up the channel or whatever you wanna call that, we have Scotch brom and the other brom, trying to think of its name, French brom. And we have dead trees that didn't get watered properly. Part of our landscaping bill, we spent several thousands of dollars for them, they haven't been watered properly. And then in the middle of the canal, we have plants, some of them are, I got, if you want pictures, I've got them on my camera. Anyway, there's some of them are as high as that door there, and they're right in the middle of the canal, and they'll impede the flow of the water, they need to be taken out this time of year, killed and then actually pulled out, cleaned out. I've only brought this up, I don't know, god, it must be five or six times in the last few months, you know? It just doesn't seem.
First time I've heard of it, Bill, from you?
Well, maybe I taught it up to the wrong place, I would talk to the field staff and mention it to them. They said they'd talked to George about it, and nothing has happened.
And is, you, what, you want us to take this to the council, to the town council?
Oh, no, not at all, I just wanted to work off of Ward's comment there that we shouldn't feel so grand. Definitely, Ward, we should not feel so grand, we're not doing a very good job at all.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board?
Who, do we have somebody in charge of our grounds?
Anyone in charge of our grounds? Not specifically, we don't fund a person to run around and do maintenance, we do it as we can. We're in full-blown construction season right now, we've got 4,000 feet of pipe in, we're trying to meet deadlines, so weeds in, in canals and things like that are not a priority right now, that's a.
Another comment, one time we had a maintenance worker or somebody came in as a gardener and took care of all of that, or could take care of it, what happened to that? We used to have a retired fireman years ago.
Well, we, we sound like we're discussing a, a topic for maybe a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have direction from us about what to take to Lauren and discuss and.
Think so.
Make suggestions? Thank you, George. Item 6B, establishing appropriation limit of the district, Treasurer Phillips.
I was just gonna ask, are we gonna be doing any, I have no problem with being informative or whatever, but are we gonna be doing any business there or just mainly sharing thoughts and ideas like we're getting? Is that a big, that's what?
It's not gonna be a regular board meeting, there may be items that have action.
Yeah, that needs to be action, okay.
Is there a chance we might, they might ask for a.
A vote on the.
A vote on the, on the chair of the lady?
Possibly.
Possibly, that's possible.
I would bet it is.
Well, communications is a step in the right direction between different, between different entities, and of course, we're right there with what.
I was on the town liaison committee for many years and we never met, and it was always the town that canceled the meetings.
Well, I think we only met one time, didn't we, Lauren?
Yeah.
I made, managed to make the town manager upset.
Yeah, well, I always upset him.
Huh?
I always upset the town, I'm on their.
On their list.
On their list.
Okay. Item 6B, establishing appropriation limit of the district, Treasurer Phillips, would you introduce this, please?
Sure. This is a action that the board takes every year to establish what they call the appropriation limit for the property taxes that are received by the district. I believe that the reason behind this is that it proves, you're proving out that you have the need for the property taxes you receive based on a calculation that was established in 1976, I believe, and it is increased every year to inflate the amount, and currently we receive about $250,000 of property taxes. If our appropriation limit was less than that, I think it's basically showing that you don't need, you don't have the need for that amount of property taxes. Obviously, we have the need for that amount with our appropriation limit being so high, and it's based off of a revenue calculation, so. So that's what we're doing, we're setting the limit, it's kind of a formality that the state requires, and that's about it.
What was it last year?
It was 1.3, I believe it was like 1.3 million.
Is there a, who comes up with that figure?
I come up with the figure based on a calculation that was given to me by the State of California.
I'll make a motion to adopt PID Board Resolution 2015-06, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Paradise Irrigation District establishing the appropriation limit for the district at 1,409,560 for the fiscal year 2016 pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion by the board, any questions?
What's the formula? It mentions in here that there's an explanation of a formula that resulted in the $1,400,000.
It's prior year appropriation limit times an escalation factor based on city population increase and cost of living increase.
So this one is different than last year's?
This number is different than last year based on that increase that was given to me by the state.
What kind of increase and what?
Increase in the cost of living and the population increase, which population increases, might have been negative.
Was it negative or 2%? It's been 2% or less for years.
It's, might have went down a few hundred people. I don't remember exactly.
Been negative for a year or two.
Yeah.
How much was the cost of living?
I don't remember exactly. 1.8%. I forget what the inflation rate was, but it was under 2%.
Under 2%. Okay. That's all the questions I had. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Any public questions or comments about this? There being none, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Fletcher?
Yes.
Director Calhoun?
Yes.
President Hett?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll move to item 6C, transmital of delinquent water charges to Butte County. Once again, Treasurer Phillips, would you introduce this?
Again, this is a action that we take every year. This year, we have done a little different. Last year, there was probably $25,000 worth of amounts that were put in there. And it was because we've changed our way of selecting people to go onto this amount, onto this delinquent water charge. So to go on the delinquent water charge in the prior year, you had to be delinquent on your account by one day, basically. So if you hadn't paid your bill within 31 days and you had a penalty on there, we were putting you on this list, not meaning we're going to send you to the liens, but you were put on there in case you didn't pay. We could send you to the liens. Now, what we've done is, anybody that has been shut off or on the shut-off notice, we've included on here, because most of the people that are a couple of days late are going to pay their bill. We've looked at the history behind that, and almost 100% of those people that were on there that were just a couple of days late came in, finally paid their bill. They weren't happy because they were put on this lien notice, and they were given a letter in the mail that said you were put on the lien notice. So we kind of segregated the ones that were either shut off or going to be shut off and put them on there. And if, you know, if someone doesn't pay that should have been on there, we're going to capture them next year anyway. And so that's why it's a little bit less than what you've seen in the past.
What does it cost us to put them on, give them off the lien notices like this?
For us to put them on to the county, for the county to collect for us?
Yes.
I don't believe that they charge us anything.
I remember where they do.
No.
No.
No, I don't think there's any charge. And the thing is, is once they're leaned, the county actually pays us even if they haven't received it from their property taxes.
And does the county charge them for the lien and when they remove it and everything? Do they have fees involved?
No idea.
They probably do. Coincidentally, that's called a teeter plan, not after our supervisor. But yeah, the way it works is the county will advance pay the district, and then the county collects it typically along with their property tax. So if the property also has to be delinquent, happens to be delinquent on their property tax bill, they'll collect it after five years' delinquency.
So if the property's sold, this lien has to be removed too?
Yep.
So even if the house goes vacant and everything else, we'll get paid. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
In other words, if I'm hearing you right, we submit this, it's $10,000 is what it is, 103. The county will give us a check for $10,000.
Right, and then they collect it as well as penalties, interest that accrues.
If the person doesn't pay, let's just take the first one on the top there. Those $108, they would attach that to the property.
Correct.
It would have sold.
And these are only submitted in, I believe it was August 10th. So the property owner has till August 10th to actually come into the office and pay it. And if they don't, then what we do is we send this, August 10th, we send this to the county, and their account is wiped clean because we've collected on it. So for them to get it off, they got to go down now to the county to get rid of it.
Does this include penalties?
We'll keep this here until August 8th.
Includes penalties too.
The what? What was that?
We'll keep this here until August 8th before we submit it.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to adopt PID Board Resolution 2015-07, transmission of delinquent water charges to the Butte County Auditor Controller for enrolling on the 2015-16 secured property tax rule.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I do, just a question. So once we receive the money from the county, then do we open their account again, or do we leave it sealed?
It's sealed until they come in and request it unsealed.
And if they came in and requested that it be unsealed and they said, "My bill's been paid," even if they haven't paid the county, then will we unseal it?
Correct.
We don't check with them?
It's been paid.
We don't check to see if they did it?
Okay, thank you.
To us, it's been paid. And again, this is a power that irrigation districts have, that other agencies do not have, and that's the power of an irrigation district, is this. So we have no, we have no uncollectible accounts. We have no write-offs.
How long does it take them to pay it?
The county?
Yeah.
The county, it's actually paid, I believe it's paid in tranches, just like your property taxes are paid in tranches. So they come every month, once, like, I think they start in November, December, and then January. But I think by the end of January, most of the delinquent accounts were paid off.
I'll recommend that we put this on the Admin and Personnel Committee agenda. Just your question about, I can see your mind spinning.
Yeah.
If we don't turn it back on.
Doesn't seem right.
You can pay your property tax-
They're using somebody else's-
Never pay your-
Yeah.
But we just keep-
Any comments or public input? Thank you. Back to the board then for a vote. May we have a roll call, please?
Director McCall?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Fletcher?
Yes.
Director Calhoun?
Yes.
President Hett?
Yes. Thank you. Passes 5-0. We're going to move to the item 6D. This is going to be a closed session. Public employee performance evaluation.
I thought you were going to have a Finance Committee report.
As soon as I finish getting this out, the Chief Financial Officer. So at this point, there was a Finance Committee meeting held with Chairperson Duncan, and I'll give him an opportunity to report if anything germane to this was-
We basically worked on the budget, and we didn't, and we did request this memo that we got today about their accomplishments for last year, but other than that, we didn't talk about.
How about the retirement? Are you guys involved with the retirement? I've asked for a report several, a couple of times, and have been told that this isn't the time to ask for it. What is the employee's retirement fund doing?
Would that be personnel? The Personnel Committee? It wouldn't be the Finance Committee.
We have no-
The Finance Committee would not be any-
No impact in it.
Roll over that.
It would be an entire board function if we wanted to measure the effectiveness of the provider.
Yeah, I don't think we've had a report to the board for some time.
Maybe we should request them to come in.
Or put it on the agenda for next month.
Or just ask him to put it on his report.
Well, if you want the investment advisor to come in and, or the retirement advisor to come in and give a report.
If we're going to be kind of talking and evaluating them, I would think that we should request that they come in and make a presentation to us.
Are we asking to evaluate our investment?
Not to evaluate it.
Are we asking to evaluate how the investment-
We're actually, Seth, we're actually the trustees for the retirement.
I understand that.
The board. That's all I'm asking, is a trustee for that, that it be reported to the board so we know what the funds are doing. I have no idea.
And this is a perfect example of why we have you write, put in writing your request for agenda items, because I heard four different things of what people would like to hear.
I'm just trying to clarify.
If you want something specific, please put your agenda request in writing so that we can meet your needs.
I don't have any problem doing it this way. It's done now, or we'll be on the agenda, I assume.
No, it won't. Not until you send in an email.
I requested it be put on the agenda.
You send in an email.
Why do I have to send an email? It's being taken down by Georgiana.
Why don't you read the rules? That's what we decided we do here, Bill.
All right, I requested it be put on the agenda. We'll see what happens.
Good. I'm not going to let it go on the agenda if there's no email requesting it.
You don't have the power.
Just watch, Bill.
Okay.
Jeez. Wait, are you going to disrupt the whole meeting, Bill?
No, I'm not disrupting.
Oh, you're not.
I'm just asking people to do their job in a nice way.
At this point, well, let me see. Do I ask for any public comments or questions in regard to our closed session item before we disappear and talk behind that door?
Is there public or E versus D or both? As a reminder, the salary discussion will not be conducted in closed session. That will be addressed in open session.
This would be about the evaluation.
So yeah, there's going to be public, there's going to be public on both.
And that's a new agenda item. It's a whole different agenda.
That's E.
E is.
That would be E.
E is the public comment.
You're ruling to wait. Okay, there being no public participation, we are going to go into and start our closed session, and we shall return. We're coming out of closed session. We evaluated the Chief Financial Officer, and no salary discussions took place during the closed session. We are now moving on to item number 6E, which is to consider compensation adjustments for the General Manager and Chief Financial Officer. Action may be taken on this. I want to remind the board and remind public that these are contractual arrangements we have with those two individuals. So the contract that they have has no expiration. Therefore, if we take no action, their contract remains the same. The board may want to reduce their pay by 25%. And if we all vote to do that, and they say, "Well, I don't accept that contract negotiation," then it stops there. Their contract stays in place. I just want to make sure people understand that they're not employees, that they are contract employees. Maybe I should find some other word to use. Contract humanoid beings. And we deal with that contract. I would like to ask the board's pleasure, before I go back to you two, and ask if we would like to consider General Managers and the Chief Financial Officers' contracts? If there are any suggestions for changes, both at the same time? Or do you want us to handle one and then the other? Is there a preference amongst the board? Separately?
I agree.
I don't care either way.
Okay.
Doug?
I agree.
Okay.
Separately?
Well, I'll disagree, just-
We can do it, we can do it either way. I'm asking a question more than I'm suggesting.
I don't know.
I'm asking a question. What is the board's-
I just thought, you know, this is the first time we've done this, and so, you know, what are we going to do here? It's all going to be visible. I suggest in this instance, since we've got our brain cells wrapped around Kevin, now we take Kevin first.
Nailing him.
Yeah. And so we're going, from either the two contractors or from legal, is there any other input or advice from staff about this as we get started?
If you want me to generally give you a kind of a synopsis of my contract and what my history salary has been. So I am a contract, I have a contract with the board. In that contract, I am obligated to whatever the Social Security increase is, an increase in my salary every January 1st. So as of January 1st, 2015, I was allotted a 1.7% increase to my salary based on whatever Social Security was, the increase in Social Security for that year was. If Social Security's zero, then that's what my contract says. I will get zero. If Social Security's five, I get five. So there is built-in COLA in my contract. Under the agreement that we had beginning of 2013, our agreement was done in August, I believe, which I already received a 3% increase. I did forego an increase as of 7/14, which was last salary adjustment. There was a 0% increase. The board did give me a $1,000 bonus, which I did appreciate. So that's basically where I've been. Before my contract, though, I was included in the management unit. So whatever management decided to negotiate to the board, I received the same benefit management received. And that's where those COLA increases came in. I also was given a range when I first started. My range was a spread of about 20% range. So I started at the bottom of the range, and under the direction of the General Manager, I was able to get merit increases up to the top of my range. And so that's what you'll see there in the other increases in my salary, which are merit increases. Those merit increases stop as of 2010. I got 1.4% merit because that's what the top of my salary range was. So that's where my salary has gone. I've kept up with management, other than in 2014, they were received, I think, a 1.5 increase after they were done negotiating their contract, and then they had got an additional 1.7% increase. And so that's where I have been, and that's where I am now.
So for all intent and purpose, the top of your range now because it moved from just COLA by COLA by COLA by COLA, by golly, it.
I mean.
Oh! It's an iPad.
Is someone trying to FaceTime you?
Yeah, I don't know.
He's getting a phone call on his iPad.
Yeah, well, it's not, I don't know what it is. I guess maybe it is a call. So anyhow, but that's why you move beyond the maximum of the range there, and that's the way all of our ranges work.
The ranges move with the COLA.
Right.
So once you give them a COLA, the COLA moves the range. A merit moves you within that range.
And basically, then, the entry-level salary that we gave you would be more today if you were to leave us and we were to hire somebody else, would probably go 20% down from the top, and that would be the beginning of the salary range.
Exactly.
Okay. So that's where we are.
Did all the merit increases you got, were they approved by the board?
No. Under my contract, the all merit increases were approved by the General Manager. The range was approved by the board. So when I was hired-
As with all employees?
The board was given, the board gave direction on what the range was, and then all salary increases were the direction of the General Manager.
And basically, the higher percentages were to catch you up to where you should have been?
It's basically-
Based on the-
Based on-
It was performance.
Performance.
All merits are based on performance. All COLAs are based on cost of living.
Cost of living, yeah, okay. Refresh my memory, you went for a 0% increase last year in correlation with the terms and conditions that we gave you for your long-term employment or-
Correct.
Your long-term employment agreement that we did with you.
That's correct.
Okay.
And at that time, there was no increase to management. Management was still in negotiation of their contract. Management negotiated their contract out, and-
And they are at just a COLA increase is all that they have?
Some management employees are still within their range to get merit increases. But they have a COLA increase similar, exactly the same as mine, Social Security.
Social Security.
So as Social Security increases- So, as Social Security increases.
Exactly. That's what I thought they were saying. How many people do you supervise?
I supervise directly eight.
Before, the guy, he didn't supervise anybody, right? Our former part-time treasurer?
Correct. He wasn't part-time. He was full. Ron, Ron was full-time.
Oh, well, I guess one guy was part-time at one time.
Before Ron, it was part-time.
Do other people in the management group, do they get bonuses?
No.
No.
Bonuses are only available for the board to dish out. Those are not within the jurisdiction.
If they're not in the contract.
Oh, management can't get bonuses?
Yeah, it's not in the contract.
Oh, okay.
Not restricted.
Yeah.
Okay, you want.
Comments or questions?
I think you ought to tell us about this memo here. It affects you and George.
Yeah, really, the.
This was requested by the Finance Committee.
Right. Really, the only piece of this memo that I truly have is the Investment Advisor Fee Reduction, which is that $2,000. And you remember that we've kind of whittled it down from the beginning. It was at $3,000 quarterly. We whittled it down to $1,500 last year, and now we've whittled it down to $1,000.
Kevin? I can't hear what you're saying. Part of what you're saying I'm not hearing.
Sorry. So, the only part of this memo that truly is my, has my.
I don't have a copy of the memo either.
You don't?
No.
It's on our desk. It's on your desk.
Where? I didn't see it.
I got it.
It was emailed to us, too. Two-page piece. Board of Directors from George and Kevin. You don't have it?
I don't.
They might not have got this into the table, because I don't have one either.
He needs one, too.
There it is, okay. Just didn't look deep enough.
So, part of that memo, really, the only one that I have dealings with is the Investment Advisor of the $2,000 fee reduction that we received this past year.
I don't have anything for you here. I just have George.
But I'm referencing the memo.
Tell you.
Of what my thumbprint is on.
Contribution.
Contribution. The other contributions, I'm going to let George definitely take credit for those. That's under his jurisdiction, and I.
Investment Advisor Fee Reduction?
That's me.
That's me.
That's me. And George has it. I'm not taking full credit for that. That's kind of a team combo here.
I understood they offered that to us or something voluntarily, didn't they?
It's something that we discussed with them on a, whenever we're, when we're meeting with them, based on our account value and what kind of services they're offering to us.
If they don't do this, they risk the chance of losing us.
Well, I realize that, but I remember something in the meeting saying that they volunteered to reduce their amount of fees. I don't remember anybody saying that Kevin or George or even the Finance Committee was involved.
That's where we got the bonuses for last year.
That was last year's fee reduction, when Dan was part of the team. Dan did come to us, and we discussed it, and he did volunteer to reduce his fees at that time. Dan's no longer with that company that we're dealing with. It's now Misty.
Do you feel that she's as good as Dan was?
I feel competent in her abilities to handle our account.
Great. I'm only bringing that up because of, because it's on here, right?
Should become a politician.
I was going to say, there was a politician statement.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Good. I have two agendas here. I have one from 7/9/14 last year, and today's agenda, 7, was made out of 7/7, and it's a Treasurer's memo. Kevin is just an excellent CPA and on his way to becoming an outstanding Chief Financial Officer. But looking at it from the standpoint of making things happen, we are a million dollars down in our working capital in one year, from the 14 to the 15, the same month and all of that. So, I've done a lot of pinceling and soul searching and talking about it, and in the 11 years that Kevin has been on the staff, he has had a $39,000 raise in his salary and a $1,000 bonus. He has, this year, on 1/1/15, you can see on the bottom here, received a 1.7 percent raise. With our financial status, I think that's where we're going to have to stay. You'll have your 1.7, because it is a pay raise, came from COLA, and you're going to get what COLA next year, and it'll have 7.18 on it, which will be, well, 1.7, I should say, on that.
It won't necessarily be 1.7. Yeah, just a caveat, it's whatever Social Security.
It's Social Security.
Yeah, so, it's not, it's not set at 1.7, it's set at whatever Social Security comes out of.
I'm just saying that 1.7 is on your pay grade.
Yes.
So, you're receiving that, you know?
Yeah.
So, that's what I feel. I think with the financial situation that we have within our district, we would not be competent to give a big pay raise or a bonus at this particular time.
I respect that.
And I have complete confidence in their ability to help pull us out of the situation we're in.
I'd like to comment, too, on the Investment Advisor Fee Reduction. I think that's part of your job. I'm really pleased that you got it, but I think it's part of your job, and I would be with Doug on the salary, another COLA, because we are, well, you know, we are Stan. I think we're in more financial trouble than we realize. But you've been informing us of it all along. Other board members don't feel that way, but anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments right now? I'm going to go to the public before we get too far.
Okay, well, I wanted to bring out one other thing that nobody brought up, was I was at a, I'm on LAFCO board, and there's another, and we discuss all the things that happen to other special districts, and several of the districts are going outside for their 218 analysis, and they're farming it out. And one of the figures that was, that one is paying is $60,000. And that's being done in-house, and I think that's a credit to us, that we're getting that out of Kevin. So, there's part of his, he's earning his money. I just want to point that out. And I, everyone says, well, if you're going to give somebody money, you better be sure where it's coming from. I know several places where it's going to come from, if we do. One is the money that we didn't spend on training, which is $11,723.
As directors?
As directors. And see, because they do such a good job of training us, they saved us that money, too. So, that's another part. There's $13,723 they've saved us.
Yeah, I'm thinking about going up to Oregon and get some more training.
Sorry, sorry, Kevin. I spent most of mine. Excuse me, most of yours.
Actually, I appreciate you spending yours.
But I think that there are very few institutions that their CFO and their manager save the district what we pay them. I don't think it's, it's nice that they're doing it, and it's part of their job, but there's a lot of people who are in other places that aren't doing this, and I really appreciate what they're doing.
They're caretakers.
Right. That's my comments.
Okay, anything, Sepp?
Just taking it all in?
I'll reserve mine now. I would like to ask if there are any public members who would like to address us regarding this? Come on up. We're still going to use the same five-minute clock, since there are not many of us here.
Is this covered by Justin Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Lauren Harvey. Don't worry, I'm not smart enough to talk five minutes. But I would say this, he does an excellent job for what I think, but I'm not a, I'm not a financial guy, so I wouldn't, you know, I just, but remember, we are down a million bucks, and if he saved us any money, that's good. He should be patted on the back and maybe, maybe give a little plaque for his room or something like that. But if you're going to give him money, then he didn't save it, because after all, he only saved it so you could give it to him in a bonus. So, your logic doesn't make any sense there to me from that standpoint. And when you're asking the public, you're going to be asking the public for a lot more money for the water, and then to say, "Well, so what? The 1.7 wasn't enough for a guy who makes 100 grand a year? He got almost $2,000 this year bonus." So, good for him. It's, you know, we agreed to it, let's pay it to him, but let's, you know, he's not going to quit if you don't hand him out any more money, because where's he going to, where's he going to live in a, in a community that's this nice, that he can make 100 grand a year at? Where's he going to go? He don't want to go nowhere. He knows he's got gravy here, and he's not leaving, so you don't have to pay to stay.
He lives in Chico.
I don't care. He gets to work in paradise, in a wonderful place. Nobody hassles him. He does damn near what he wants. You know, you don't, you guys, when you talk about the checks and stuff, you don't, nobody scolds him. Tonight, I've got it on the camera, he, tonight, there was three or four things none of them could explain. We all have to check on that, when you went through the checks. Three or four things he didn't know about. That's his job.
He's going to let us know.
Yeah, he is, but he didn't know it now, at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
I have another con, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on a line. I have to wait.
Any other public speakers? Yes, sir?
Barry Bunty again. Director Flesher talked about a million-dollar reduction from 2014 to 2015. Was that a reduction in revenue?
That's a reduction in our reserve expenses that are set aside for capital projects, and we draw them out to pay for capital projects. It is not an operational loss.
Not an operational reduction. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, 666,000 of that is just working capital that we had. They're not particularly capital projects, but they're, because, like, I don't consider it well, anyway. We don't. There's 666,000 of that million is unrestricted funds. And there was 350, I got it right here, 360,000 that are restricted, which means that the 1.2 is for the capacity fee, and that's already spent. We committed that to AECom, the outfit that's doing the engineering, and then there's 500,000 of that reserve that is for the final payment to U.S. Bank on a note that's due way down the road. So, that we can't touch. Now, we could have, we could touch the 1.2 mil that's on for capacity fees, but we've already committed that basically to AECom, if Kevin's shaking it, you see. So, that 677,000 was unrestricted, whatever we wanted to do with it, but it would all come in there together. To a degree, we're surviving on month-by-month.
But almost like 20% is approved by the board.
All expenses are being paid.
Exactly.
All expenses are being paid.
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Plus our, plus our.
Exactly.
Net load, you know?
There you go. Exactly.
But we are in a financial situation because we're spending more than we bring in.
I understand.
Yep, we're just, we're spending more than we bring in.
So, we're looking for water.
That's before the drought even.
Okay.
Go ahead.
On topic.
Any other public comments?
I have a comment, and I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, at this time, we'll come back to the board. Go ahead.
What is your total salary with benefits? It says salary on one side and COLAs and so forth, but I have a note from last year on George's, which I'll bring up when George is up here. But his salary was, or total with benefits and everything, was a lot more money than he has listed here. So, how much total were your benefits, retirement, et cetera?
I have that broken down. Kevin broke it down.
Do you have it? I didn't bring a copy.
Okay, I'll be happy to give that. And I'm very happy to give that, because it's nice that you have this kind of an income coming in. It's 111,263 cash, and then retirement that we pay in, 12%, is 13,638. And the medical and all of the others is another 20,000, which is just the way that happens. I've got to feel a little tooth myself that I don't go yet. Well, anyway, for 145,255.98 for the year 2014. That was Kevin's total take.
Yeah.
I move we offer a merit increase in base pay to Kevin in the amount of 4.0 percent.
Do you have a figure?
Nope. Do I have a second for discussion, any further? The motion dies for lack of a second? Anybody else have any ideas or concerns for his contract?
I think he deserves a bonus, but I don't know if we can afford one this year, and mainly because we're trying to conserve water because of the drought, and so our revenues are down, and that does hurt, and that. I'm hoping that whoever said we won't lose him because we don't give him a raise is correct, but you just never know these days. And I'm afraid that if we did hire, go out to a person to replace him, it would probably cost us a lot more than we're paying right now.
Kevin, don't take this the wrong way. In our conversation last year, we decided on, you were going to be set at, the COLA rate was from here on forward, you were going to be basically set at the COLA rate. Could be 5 percent, could be zero. We don't know. Whatever it happens to be is whatever it happens to be. And Mr., correct me if I'm wrong, basically, you said you would be happy with that for a long period of time.
Absolutely.
On there. So, believe me, the thought of losing you, yes, that does concern me, because I don't think we're going to find somebody with your qualifications that would, obviously, the rate of pay would change where the base is and where it would start, plus we'd have to just kind of start all over again. But you are happy working at your current salary in there. I'm sure you would like to have a raise. I'm not going to, I'm not going to even insult you with that type of question, but in our conversation last year, the COLA increase would be enough to suffice for you for the next few years, until maybe we get things in place that are going to allow us to have a larger budget.
Okay. So, any other motions? I mean, we decrease his salary by 1.0 percent.
Yeah, I know.
Do we have a second?
I have a second, it's just for the hell of it, but I'm not going to.
I'm going to move that we keep, or did it die?
Motion dies for lack of a second again.
Do we need a motion if, to just keep his regular contract?
We need to determine whether we're finished discussing him and making motions, because when we move on, we move on.
I don't think we need a motion.
If we're not going to increase.
If we're not going to do anything.
If you're not making any changes, you don't need a motion.
Yeah. So, no other motions coming up? Kevin, thank you for your service.
And I do want to thank the board.
Greatly appreciated.
I want to tell Sepp that I actually, I really enjoy working here, and I enjoy working with you guys, and I do, I do like the community, in that it is a very nice opportunity to work here, so I do want to say thank you to the board for that opportunity.
Thank you for your continued service.
Well, Kevin, as I've mentioned before, here in the building and other places, as far as I'm concerned, and I've worked with quite a number over the years, working with three of them right now, at different levels, you're right out there at the front of the list. You know, you like, you learn something every day, and let's get this thing turned around, so that we won't be losing a billion bucks of working capital in one year.
Get it turned around.
Yeah, I know.
Yep.
Good show, Kevin.
Thank you.
And it's really been a pleasure.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next, next item for the Consider Compensation Adjustments for the General Manager. George, would you like to make any? adjust, adjustments for the general manager. George, would you like to make any statements for this, for this round, round one of the 15 round bout?
Sure, I might as well.
Round one of a one round bout, I think.
Ding ding.
I have enjoyed making a difference in the community I grew up in. And I think I've given back to this district much more than, than what the salary's been. Let's just put it that way. I'm not unhappy here by any stretch, but I do think it's appropriate to point out things that, you know, Kevin stayed up with management. And in this, this last action, he actually fell behind them because they got an extra one and a half. That's happened to me for several years. I'm kind of the highest paid employee and the easiest one to pick on, so to speak. Every year, I've accepted the terms the boards offered me and moved forward and continue to do my job to the best of my ability. So I, I am interested in seeing an increase. I think this position for the size of the district, the number of employees, responsibilities, the size of the budget, the salary range here for a general manager is behind the curve. And if you did a salary survey, you would probably find that out. But I don't believe in salary surveys. You only really come to find out what they mean when you lose somebody. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Anything from board?
I wanna, he, he said that Kevin lost. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. If you go to this chart.
He lost?
Didn't take an increase on July 1st, 2014. 14. Management came to an agreement after that date and got a one and a half percent before they got their 1.7.
Oh, and so you got $1,000 and they got how much?
1.5%.
1.5% of whatever their wage was.
Forever.
Forever? Just until, just until they die.
You know, that, that's similar thing happened to me, but you were changing positions. You went from a, a budget manager or business manager to a chief financial officer. And so you, you have, you stepped up a little bit, except for maybe you didn't get that 1.5 bill.
So you got responsibility and less pay.
That's the way we do it. That's the way we roll.
I'm not letting, I'm not gonna let it go.
That's just the way it is.
I'm making a point.
Well, well, the one good thing is that the $1,000 paid for over half of it. So. And the problem was is we, I only felt we had $6,000 and we'd already given George five. So that was the way I felt.
But you lose it this year.
Huh?
But you lose it this year.
Lose what?
Cause he's not getting that one and a half percent this year.
The union people still got it.
Yeah, but he's getting 1.7.
So did the union.
Can we move on to George's? So, good idea.
We are on George's, so good. We are on George's. I was just clarifying the statement that George-
I'll hold up both of my last years and this year's, and you know what I was saying about it. So that's where I come off on this type of a thing. Complete confidence. And George, a lot of this here, this tank liner and whatever, that you're going to have the opportunity to hopefully save the district considerable amount of money as we go into this AECom thing and others. And I'm sure that you will do that. Because you're just that type of an employee. Am I right?
Well, I do my job. I will-
I realize that. And so what I'm trying to say, George, this is your job. And-
Wait, wait, let me clarify.
Go ahead.
I said I will continue to do my job.
Yeah.
Another manager sitting in my chair, especially if they weren't a civil engineer, would not have directed staff to take the liner part out of that request for proposals. We would have lumped it all together. That's where staff was headed, to clarify that. And we would have already spent this additional $300,000 and nobody would have known the wiser. But I was doing my job, yes. But not every manager would have done that job.
Well, you're, well, you're not every manager. So you would, you, and I would assume that you would look for that type of a situation so that you could save the district money in the future.
Of course I would.
I, I know that, George. I'm trying to compliment you-
Thank you.
...and say that. But anyway, getting into more detail, cause I'm gonna go exactly the same way as I did with Kevin. I think this 1.7% is whatever it is. And I did a little pressing bore out here cause I only had one time with him. In the past 10 years, you have had a 97, a $45,000 increase in your salary over the 10 years, base pay on here. And along with that, you picked up in the last four years, $21,000 in bonuses. And if you add that on this type of a thing. And we're still in a financial situation with this one here. Last year, and I have this, the same one as I have, I asked for this. You had a salary of 140,000, but the bonuses brought you up to 145. Did we pay retirement on that?
No.
Okay. I didn't think we would. Cause I've gotten bonuses myself. Okay. We paid into George's retirement fund, $22,000. The medical was another 19. That his total compensation for 2014 was 186,899 on this situation. And so that clouded everything. Doing an awesome job, George. It's just that we lost a million bucks last year.
No, we didn't.
We didn't lose anything.
We didn't lose anything.
You keep saying that.
Of capital money, we did.
We didn't lose it.
We spent it.
We know, we know exactly where it went.
We spent it on-
It's not losing.
We spent it on projects approved by this-
$100 less working capital.
Okay. So when we start populating our reserves, that our long-term reserves that we're gonna set up, and we set aside $5 million into these reserves, then we'll look at those two guys and say, hey, you made us an extra $5 million. Thank you.
And I would be the first to give them-
You don't know, you don't understand. Oh, did you get that?
Are we gonna, when, when, when I hold these up, cause I've been here and done that before, at different places. Well, I hold this up and say, in-
Just-
7918 versus 7720, we're $5 million in the bank of working capital. Whatever we do with it, okay?
It will be the board that sets it aside.
I understand that completely.
It will be the board that has spent the million dollars last year. It is not them.
I understand that completely.
You don't either.
They're just sucking water now because of shit.
Well, I will, I'll make a comment and then we'll, we'll open this to the public.
No, I'd like to make some comments when we get her.
Oh, you haven't had your opportunity?
You go ahead and make your comments and I'd like my-
Okay. And that is that I'm, I'm not sure I trust these guys here.
What guy?
The, that general manager guy there.
Are you not sure you trust him?
That's correct. I don't know how many years a person can continue on getting beat. And coming up with-
Oh, you mean you don't trust him to stick around? Oh, okay.
This type of cost savings that has far exceeded his salary, that would not have been there if we had like a caretaker general manager, somebody retiring within the next five years. Or the existing general manager gets pissed off and says, I just don't need to work that hard any longer. I don't need to be stressing about this. I don't need to be meeting with all of those public clubs and like he did today with the sirs and giving presentations. I don't, I, I'll be here. I'll be responsive. I'll make sure we're, we're gonna give good, clean water. And Jim and Jim and somebody else?
Christie.
Christie?
Christie.
And Kevin can just, you know, we'll, we'll all keep this board. And I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that you're gonna back down and not give us your 100% effort there next year, George. And I want to admonish you now for not doing that. Now it's your turn, Bill.
Okay. George makes 186,899, all benefits and everything with the guy. On water storage tank repair, everything I have on it talks about Jim Pastore- I don't say his last name right.
Passanese.
Passanese. Did almost all the work as far as contacting people, supervising the project and everything else.
Yes, he did his job.
And reporting to the board. He did a very good job.
He did a very good job.
Yeah.
That was why I asked if they, if we can give them bonuses.
Yeah.
But we can.
No, no, we can't. But anyway, he did a very good job. So I don't think, maybe, maybe you can pick up 300,000, but the actual work was done. Now, no place in your projects where you're talking about new things, George, have you used the return on investment? Other words, I started talking about this a couple of years ago. Basically, how is this new capital project either gonna save us or make us money on it? And in most cases, there has been no return on it. No return on investment. We just made more investment and so forth. One, I keep talking about, of course, is the one we promote so much in saving water. So no, no reports on return investment or on the projects you're talking about. Just more expenses going out the door for things. And I think sometimes, I have a friend who worked for a water and sewage district down in, south of the Bay Area. And he said the worst thing that ever happened to him was having a civil engineer on the staff. Because a civil engineer will invent projects, steel, concrete, and that's what they understand. That's what they've been trained to do. And they'll do it over the years, build something new. And that's the pattern we're in right now with George. And I'll go to this. I walked around the yard today. And in the yard, the yard drainage isn't working right. I don't know what the deal is. There's yellow straps around the draining things. And I saw where it overtopped at one place, even with this light rain winter we had. So I wonder if the drainage is all right. I brought this up before. The gate is rusting away. There's no attempt to do anything about it. And there's other things in the yard, which I mentioned earlier about landscaping and stuff. The thing to me is that I don't think the yard's finished. The gate isn't painted. It should have been done. The drainage system's having a problem. Should be fixed. The drainage that comes over into our property from the neighbors is washed out the canal up there a little bit, moved boulders and stuff. And I've talked about it for a year. There's been no attempt to fix it, maintain it. And the landscaping isn't, not in very good shape, but all around here. These are all George's responsibilities. As a board, we don't, we don't have any power over any of the other employees. We have just over two employees and they're sitting there. We don't, I can't, I go out and talk to the field superintendent and I'll go out and talk to Pastorelli and some other people. But at no time do I say to them, we should do this, or we should do that. I'll say something like, you know, what's happening with this thing? Or why hasn't this been taken care of? And ask them questions. But I'm not about to tell them to move a shovel or do anything like that because that's not the responsibility of board member. In fact, if somebody got hurt because you told them to move the shovel, you're responsible financially. So that's my comments about it. I think George has done an okay job. I have a problem with employee morale and other things, but that's gonna be tomorrow. And I think that if you made a comment like you did on Kevin, reducing his salary, I'd second it. That's my comment.
May I respond?
I can only make that motion once on Kevin. We've already gone away.
May I respond?
Yes.
Those are valid criticisms. I make a decision as a general manager. We have an opportunity to get pipe in the ground at the lower part of town without incurring high cost paving costs because the town's gonna come in and overlay it. So I've got every person available down there, getting that pipe in the ground and the services in the ground before, so that the town can put that paving contract out. Those are the decision- it's not gonna be an argument. I let you say your piece, let me say mine. That's how I operate. That's the decision I made. Cause to me, that was important. That saves us money and that gets production done. Things like weeds and gates and things like that can wait for another day. That's my style. If the board wants it to be different, then the board can be, can directly otherwise.
Didn't we used to have a gardener or on staff? I thought we had somebody we paid that came around and took care of the landscaping.
We haven't had that since that yard over there. And we found out when we moved over here and we started investigating that, that it was gonna have to be prevailing wage and very expensive.
You couldn't just hire a high-term gardener to come in at 10 dol- let, you know, 10 hours a month or something?
You can't.
What would be the prevailing wage for?
I, I don't, it's posted with the state. But you, you would have to pay prevailing wage for that job. They'd have to be registered with the state. It, it would be inexpensive.
$54 an hour, some ridiculous number.
Maybe not. Maybe only 40.
Well, didn't have a spraying contractor come in and spray the weeds?
Probably not time for that.
He's, he's registered under the prevailing.
He's registered under the prevailing wage and you're not using him anymore?
He's, yeah, he's a, yeah, yeah. He's, no, he's a sole source contractor. So he has to register. We're paying extra fees for that. But he gets to pay himself what he wants.
He wants to what?
He gets to pay whatever he wants to himself.
Oh, okay.
We're getting off topic here.
All right.
We are.
I'll keep hammering on it.
I have one other thing, sorry. Your, your comment about Jim Passanese, yes, he did a fantastic job. He did his job administering those contracts, getting the bids to, packets together for me to review, et cetera. What I pointed out here is that bid package was gonna include additional work that would have cost us at least $300,000. But by me pulling it out, and as shown in the engineer's letter that reviewed it, we don't have to do that liner. Maybe never. So.
Who's the engineer that letter you got?
It's on the backside.
Right there. Harper.
Huh?
It's right here.
Harper, I didn't look at it. That's the, we paid a civil engineer to give us opinion?
Yes, of course. You have to.
Why can't you stamp it? As a civil engineer?
I can't do everything. So this board hired Harper to do an entire tank evaluation and that's their specialty.
Okay. He did the tank evaluation that he had to, and he came up with, you didn't need the liner?
After George suggested to pull it out.
No, he, after the initial work was completed, this opinion came out.
His opinion came out?
Yes. After the work was completed. After we made the decision not to put a liner in until we found out whether we needed to or not, this letter said we didn't need to.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Questions from the board members?
I wanna make a statement. A couple of years ago, George came forward and wanted to get up to date with what the union people have done. It was a bill, hired, high number, and we turned him down. And I was worried that it would affect George's performance. And for a couple of months, I think it did. But George, being the person he is, he got right back into it. I think he, he stumbled a little bit for a while. I, he even dressed different for a while. I noticed all this.
Might have done that.
Yeah. And everything. But, and so it, these things do affect people. And you are right on that. And it did. But because he's an outstanding person, it didn't last very long. And he, before he knew it, he was out there working harder than ever. And I, and I don't think we could replace him.
And I feel good taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't feel good taking advantage. That's right. That's, that's my, that's me. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Well, no, we haven't-
Oh, we're not public.
We haven't heard from the public yet. Come on up.
Thank you. Lauren Harvey again. You know, the other day, I went to the store with my grandkids. Just a short story here. And I went to the store with my grandkids and my grandkids wanted to have an ice cream bar. But I got the groceries for the house and stuff, and I didn't have enough because I live on a small retirement. And I didn't have enough to buy the ice cream that they wanted. And they got their feelings hurt, but I didn't buy it. But the fact of the matter is, I don't love them any less, and I don't appreciate them any less. And they're still mighty fine grandkids. It's just that I didn't have the extra money to buy the ice cream for them. Now, that's a hypothetical story, but it applies to George. So I want you to remember that. And George, some other things, if you- And George, some other things, if you were getting advice from me, which of course you're not, but if you was, I'd say get a negotiator to negotiate for you because you're a fine man, but you get your feelings hurt fast. And, and it shows, everybody knows it, and I'm sorry that you get your feelings hurt in these negotiations because it's got nothing to do with you personally. It's got to do with the state of PID at this time and the amount of people that live in Paradise and what a job should be worth in Paradise. And the other thing is about your civil engineer license, do you suppose you would have got, do you think that helps you get the job? Because I think it helps you get the job, so you can only sell it at one end. You can't, you can, you can either say, "Hire me because I've got this extra license and I'm the better choice and you can get the job with it." You, you can't keep selling it. You see what I mean? You got the job with it and you're, and you're getting a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year, you're getting, you're getting another, you're getting another, another, this year, you'll be getting almost three grand from the COLA raise. How many, how many people do you know got three grand this year raised in this economy? You're, you're doing a good job and honest, and Kevin's doing a good job, but the thing is, when, 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 we were just talking a few minutes ago about, about Kevin losing that, that 1.7 percent, aren't you, aren't you the negotiator with the union? Didn't you give that money to the employees?
These people do that.
You negotiated with the union, you give up the, the 1.7 percent?
We had a lawyer do it.
Well, there's a gal.
Whatever, but it ain't, but it's no, it's no reflection on Kevin at all. He does a good job, it's no reflection on you. You didn't lose anything through your own default. You know, you do a fine job, and so does George. But the fact of the matter is, at some point, there's a top out on this thing, and, and if you're already getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, a COLA is a pretty damn big raise every year, especially when it compounds onto your wages automatically. So, think about it, boys, this is Paradise, it's a small town, you're getting a lot of money, you do a good job, and nobody doesn't want to pay you, but just how much, where can it all go to, you know? I think, I think all the board members ought to raise their prices this year automatically, whatever it is. Just, just raise it up, the COLA to, to the public and see how your businesses hold up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like, from the public would like to speak?
Sure. I'll take a shot at it. Here's my evaluation. This is a pretty good board. You come up with pretty good policies and resolutions, but you can't do anything about it. But he can, and that's what he does, and he does it well. Our focus for a year or more has been on, we don't want to waste so much water. We sell less water, you have a lower income. But that's been the focus, that the board is directed and he has implemented. He's good at it. He gets staff and field people to implement those things, as well as communicating with the public and education and all those other parts of that that work. So, here's the thing, we, we have this goal from the state. It goes up through next February. So, let's say we beat that 36 percent every single month, give him 500 bucks for it. All eight months, he gets a four grand bonus. Do it for seven months, you give him 3500 dollars. You do it for six months, you give him 3000 dollars. The idea is, is that that's performance oriented. We ask him through our policies and procedures, water conservation measures, et cetera, to implement these things and do it. He has been doing it. We want him to do it all through the entire state's requirement, which I think is February next year, okay? If in fact we do that, I'd say for those eight months, 500 bucks a month, give him 4000 dollar bonus, and make sure it's a big deal in the press, that that's the kind of thing this district can do. But I also think we need to raise the rate on the top tier of water users because there's still too many people using too much water, and they should be paying more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward.
I want to make a comment. I, I'm the only board member that was here when George was hired.
Oh, I thought.
I'm the only board member left.
I thought Lauren was here.
He wasn't a board member.
It sounded like he, he.
Anyway, I can guarantee that I didn't even know he had a civil engineer license when I hired him. I hired him because he was young and very active, and I'm glad I did.
He's spunky.
Right. I just wanted to get it out. I didn't, I didn't hire him because he had a civil engineer's license.
I, I, I'm going to make a comment on Ward's.
Go ahead. I was just going to ask if any other public members want to speak?
No.
Okay. We'll come back, we'll come back to the board now. Go ahead, Sepp.
Okay, so, I somewhat like Ward's idea, but we're not going to meet on a monthly basis to decide what George's bonus is going to be for this month. I guarantee that's not going to happen, so I am going to make a motion for a one-time merit bonus for this year of 5000 dollars.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it and then I'll amend it.
Okay, we have a first and a second?
Okay, and I.
Further discussion?
I want to amend the motion.
Oh, Larry wants to say something.
I want to amend the motion and have it continue on and give Kevin a 2000 dollar bonus. That's my amendment.
I'll second that.
We give George five and out of that, we take two and give it to Kevin?
No, 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 no. We've got 13,000 that we can deal with, so we're, we're still got left 6,000 dollars.
I'm just being honory.
I know it. It's been seconded, okay? He seconded the amended.
Oh, you did? I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll discuss the amendment to the motion. I think I'd like to ask a question of legal counsel. Is it okay for us, since we haven't left the general topic of salary increases, to reach back and?
You can revisit an old agenda item. It's same meeting, same agenda, it's not a problem.
And plus, we're not really adjusting his salary, which was the actual, which was the actual topic.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't getting in the territory we shouldn't be.
Good question.
Okay, discussion, further discussion?
Yeah.
Amendment to the motion?
You're going to make George's salary 190?
No, going to make George's salary 142,667.
No, no, all the benefits he has, you're going to add 5,000 to it, so it'll be 190, I'm trying to do the math, 191,000.
When I go and negotiate my salary, Bill, at my work, I don't go, "And plus, I get gas in my truck every week, and you put tires on it, and I'm driving a company truck, and oh, yeah, and then you took me out."
You're working for a private company.
You took me out to lunch last week, so let's see, I was 22 dollars there. I don't add in all those things. I'm negotiating my salary. The salary is what we're negotiating here, his benefits package and his medical and all that, that's already done.
This is public service.
Okay, you're absolutely right.
Public service is known for a great deal of income, and we're just going over, the district is down in income from the drought and so forth, and that was the reason supposedly we're going to hold the salaries.
I'll, I'll just answer your question. Yes, I'm upping his wages to 190,000.
Okay, so let's, we'll stop the discussion back and forth, but.
Oh, compensation, thank you.
Was there anything else, Bill, that?
Well, Kevin's the same base as a couple of brand more. What is it, you know, it's paradise, water users, money, shoot, we don't, we're just up here as public board, and we just give things away because we think we should, and okay, give it away, boys.
Quite honestly, I think that they're.
Let's not have a discussion on it.
I'm just going to say that I think their compensation is a lot, worth a lot more, so.
Well, we'll, we'll work down to that, but I want to, this is a hot topic and an emotional issue, so we'll just make sure that we don't argue back and forth, we'll just each say our piece. Doug, is there anything you'd like to say about the motion to amend the motion?
No, I wish we could do all of that, but looking at the whole package, and I haven't even mentioned page 15 of the budget yet, which I'll be doing tomorrow, I'm still at the 7, 1.7 percent where I have to hang in there because of the financial status of the district.
Okay. Oh, you, you made the motion.
I made the motion.
Sepp, you seconded it.
Yeah. It's up to you, Ken.
It's, well, I'm just going to give my comment at this time.
Right, that's what I mean.
You know, well, I made a motion to increase Kevin's actual salary. Nobody liked that.
It was 4,500.
That's what it was. I think that the, the excuses we use, that this is a tough time, are fake. I don't believe that that means anything to anybody. Because when the times are rolling good and fat, nobody's going to want us to give these guys increases that'll make up for what we didn't give them when it was too lean and they really deserved it. This will just be rolled away and forgotten. It's just, it's just a convenient excuse to move on and say you made it based upon some type of logic. Maybe, maybe you believe in it, maybe you don't, I don't know. I don't believe in it myself. I think that even in the tough times, we make the adjustments that are right to satisfy our employees. That is apparently what the board did when we voted on our last union contract, or the unions' contracts. But we voted to do that. And here we are with these guys quibbling about that and not wanting to do that. So, so be it. I'm going to go to the, to the public now and ask after this session here, before we vote on this amendment, if there are any comments.
Lauren Harvey. So, for, we got no water and it's lean times, and we've asked the rate payers to cut back on water. And because they've done such a good job of cutting back on water, now we're going to charge them more, we're going to charge them, penalize them because they did such a good job of saving water. But we're going to reward other people during bad times because we all have it coming. So, I think you guys, in the, in the, in the, in the light of fair play, I don't think you should ask the rate payers for more money because you haven't got enough income now. If you're going to, if you're going to follow through with George deserves the raise, I think the rate payers deserve a cut in rate, uh, rate because we've done such a damn good job of saving water and conserving water. So, I think you guys ought to seriously consider about letting us have some of our money back because as rate payers, we've done a wonderful job too. And you don't want to hurt our feelings any, so you should, you should consider giving us back some money too because we've done a good job too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Ward?
Well, I don't want to counter that directly, but once I learned how I could do more to save more water, I got to a lower tier, so I pay a lot less now. And the stuff in my yard, it's still doing okay.
I didn't get any sand out at all. Well, I'm, I'm kind of glad you said that, Ward, because I was going to make a comment about the fact that when people conserve, they do save money. Next public comment?
Being an old private sector guy, to me, bonuses are like commissions. You don't raise the base rate, base salaries, you're just giving them a one-time bonus. You don't have to do that. And as far as what George does or what any of the staff people do here, this district is going to go on even if we only got one month's water left in that lake. You know, you've got to have somebody to run it, you've got to have a board to run it, and, you know, you can, you're not going to be able to run it with people that are underpaid. And I'm not advocating for a big salary. I'm just saying that we're conflating some things here that we shouldn't be. And we should look at these people as employees, and what are they, what is their value to the town of Paradise and to the Paradise irrigation district? What is their value to you as a board member? Think about it. It's not raising the base salary, it's just a commission.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? We'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion before we vote on the amended motion?
Well, I'd like to comment on what Barry just said. I absolutely realize exactly what you just said, but I do not think that the town of Paradise wants to hear that this board raised his base salary to where I actually think it should be. So, my only alternative with the board that we have is to offer some type of merit bonus, even though quite honestly, I don't think that's the way we should be going. So, you're absolutely right. It's, you're paying a commission, you're not paying a base salary increase. And the worth of these two is way higher than I think the numbers that we've seen upon this board. If you compare it to the hospital manager, any manager of any large corporation, a couple water districts relatively close to us, I know a lot of people making a lot more money doing the same job, and probably with not as much integrity as these two gentlemen have here, so I absolutely realize what you're saying, and I think that a few of us on the board realize that.
You'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, if it's okay. I just want to kind of remind the board of what we've gone through in the last year and what George has really led us through to this, to where we are today. We're in an unprecedented time of a drought that the state is coming in and regulating what this district must do. Not what we should do, what we can do, what we must do. George has put us in a position through decision-making to become, I feel, the most technologically advanced district in the North State. There is multiple districts in the board, as talked about it, close by, away from us, Chico, that do not have the ability that we do to get through this drought and to have the storage in the reservoir that we have. Without that, those decisions that were made to get us to this position, we would not be where we are today. We would probably have much less water in the reservoir, we would have a lot more upset customers based on getting letters after all is said and done that they have a leak or something else is going on. So, I just want to remind the board that there's, to defend their position to the public about what he has really worked. And, you know, he's lagged behind management. He's lagged behind what you guys have given the union.
Absolutely.
There's been times that he's taken less pay, and, and he's accepted that, you know? I kind of, I, I've calculated the number out of where he would be to get up to that point. So, I just want to give the board a little bit of defense to a decision that they can make on what his work really is.
I, today I sat down and figured out if I'd have stayed in LA, how much I'd be making now. Well over 200,000 a year. But I came up here and probably lived longer.
Everybody makes those decisions. Everybody makes those decisions based on that, but I just wanted to kind of say that I could be making, I know I could be making a lot of money if I stayed in LA, but I don't want to, I, I do my own job.
It's an important thing.
But I've also kept up with management, a little bit behind, but I've also kept up with management too, so.
But.
Any other comments?
I'm just basically putting my thoughts, which I hope I've done a pretty good job of explaining, on the bottom line. I've been in meetings where cities and other municipalities wind up making some horrible mistakes because they hate to cut the bottom line, you see? And I just don't, as an elected individual, plan on being in that situation, you know? Because I think I pretty well explained these two months here, and that's what we're dealing with out here. And I have complete confidence in George. He's a tremendous presenter going to the Serbs or wherever he goes and talks about it, and here, and this is a great district, but I still have to refer back to the bottom line. And I'm not being mean to with anybody, it's just good, sound, ECON 101 is what it is, you know? Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking down.
Yeah.
I, well, no, I'm, I'm ready for another public. You get another bite at the apple. I, I think this is illegal, it's against our rules, you can't come up once you've sat down.
Yeah, you didn't let me do that before.
No, I didn't.
That's because you're with the. Would you like to come back up, Ward? Because I'm really interested in hearing what Barry has to say, so.
I'm troubled, I'm troubled by all of this to some degree. You guys have a fiduciary responsibility to the people that elected you. Part of that fiduciary responsibility, to me, when I was in positions like that, was to maintain a staff that performed for me, which performed the duties for.
which performed the duties for that public, public that elected me. And if I lost that staff or if I had to change that staff, then it was incumbent upon me, as a director, to make sure that I was doing better than the previous one I had. And, you know, you're talking about, in Mr. Corolla's, uh, motion, you're talking about a variable cost, not a fixed cost. You can pull that away, that's not gonna be here next year. You gotta look at it again next year if you wanna give him another variable adjustment or not. But your fiduciary responsibility, to me, requires you to maintain a staff to run this district. And I think, you know, there's some criticisms about a lot of things that each, each one of you's got individual criticisms of George or Kevin or whatever. But, uh, you know, you can hash that out with them in your management meetings. I assume you have those. And, you know, drag them and bounce and sit them down here and say, "Let's get this done," you know? That kinda stuff. Anyway, to me, it's just a fiduciary responsibility. And if, if you're talking about addressing the people of the City of Paradise, you know, you're meeting your obligation by hiring good staff and maintaining good staff. What you wanna pay them is up to you guys because you don't get good ones for nothing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, see, now we, now we've taken a bite of the, a bite of the bitter apple here.
I know, I, I already know what I'm doing, so.
All right.
Thank you.
I only have Ward to go next.
Two things I'd like to say. One is, I'm also on the lowest rate. But I equate that to the fact of, sure, the farmers can't produce the food and I bought less food, but I get less too. I pay less, but I get less, which is exactly what the water is. I can't consume as much water. I am saving money by being on the lower tier. But I don't get a, I don't get to use water freely like I want to. So I'd like to, I don't think, I don't think Ward's argument for that's very good because he gets less consumable. He may not realize it, but I realize it. He's getting a smaller stack of groceries for a smaller amount of money. So that, remember that. And, and, and George, you have done a wonderful job of, of, of coaxing the folks in the community to conserve. But it's us that conserved. It's us that conserved. It's, you may have conserved at your house and you may be part of the party and, and thank you for being part of the party. But we all sacrificed too. And, and, and to go ahead and, to go ahead and give somebody a raise during these kinda times is a slap in the face for those of us who made a legitimate effort to use less water. Sure, we pay less, but we got less too. We don't take a bath no more, we take a spit shower. We've done, we've done our part too and I, I feel like George ought to do his. And I also just wanna say one thing to George and Kevin. I feel like you guys would be true gentlemen. If this board is foolish enough to give you guys a one-time bonus, I'd like to see you two guys be genuine enough to say, "I wanna hand it back to the district because I know it's tough times." You acknowledged that I deserve it, but I wanna give it back to you 'cause I know you're in a hole and you're not making as much money. Let's see if you're that good of folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else gonna talk to the board, public, at this time?
I'll pass.
Okay. We're, we're back in control on the board. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Wait, okay, one more time. Yeah, you went into that pretty quick.
I missed it too.
Okay. Why don't you do a roll call?
All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, which is to provide $5,000 one-time bonus to George and to provide a two-
If you approve the amendment to the motion, you're only approving adding the 2,000 for him.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can, before you do this, real quick, let's just say this doesn't go anywhere. Um, are we still able to come back and talk about Kevin's salary?
Yeah.
Okay. Get it?
Roll call vote, please. Now, so they'll make it clear, this is in regard to the amendment, which is to provide a $2,000 bonus to Kevin, which doesn't mean that we're going to approve the bonus. It just gets tagged on to the writer of the first motion.
Correct.
Uh, roll call.
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Fletcher?
No.
Director Kella?
No.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Oh, that wasn't one of the choices. Yes. Now we have a motion before the board to approve, to approve a $5,000 bonus for George and a $2,000 bonus for Kevin. These are one-time bonuses, not affecting base salary. French benefits are not paid on it. And, um, any further comments? Communication from within the board?
I do, we, we've got the money because of the money we didn't spend on training. So that's where, so that's where, so that's where it's coming from.
Oh, right.
I'll, I'll ask a question on that. He wants to give that, is that where the money's gonna come for, from?
No.
We, I'm saying that we have the money because of that. Not necessarily it's gonna come from there.
It's small, it's so small.
So small, it doesn't matter. What is our budget, six?
Seven million.
Seven million? And we're talking seven thousand?
I completely understand that, okay.
Any further comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Vice President Corolla?
No.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Fletcher?
No.
Director Kella?
No.
President Hatt?
Yes.
This is turning into a very interesting meeting.
I forgot to announce the others.
The first one passed.
It was three, two.
Three, two.
And this failed.
This one failed, two, three.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion now to increase George's base salary by three and a half percent and Kevin's base salary by 1.75 percent.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we get to start.
How much money we talking about?
We're talking about $5,000, $4,999 for George. And Kevin, I don't have your numbers in front of me. That would bring George up to...
That's besides the COLA, right?
Besides the COLA, going off the 142.
Right, it's a merit.
It wouldn't be, yeah, it's a, well, it's a merit, but it's an increase in salary.
The COLA, the COLA already have it 1.7.
3.5 for George, 1.75 Kevin.
Then we'll see what happens in January with the new COLA.
Right, right.
That's you.
But it's not eliminating the COLA for next year. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Oh.
It's part of the contract.
That would bring George up to 147, 660 and some change. And that's gonna bring Kevin up to 114?
Zero.
085. And who knows, might be zero next year. Or it might be 10.
Now, actually, on Kevin, is that an additional 1.75 above the COLA?
1.75, that's the-
Above the COLA?
It's taking whatever his base rate is now.
But he was already at the COLA, so he's at 112, 132. Yeah, the COLA's, yeah, the COLA's not one of those things we calculate in 'cause it was already in his contract.
Right, so it's in addition to it.
So. And it's only- We don't look at it as a plus. We look at it as 1.75 to his base salary.
So do we understand the motion, everybody?
Before you vote, point of clarification. I think it's assumed, but the effective date would be July 1st.
2015.
2015. Is that year intent?
Absolutely.
That is a good thing to bring up. Thank you. So we need to be doing this all power-shifting one month forward next year.
Right, for about this year, yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, I, because we've got a twist here, I'm gonna go back out to the public and see if public would like to give their comments or opinions again. I think we've heard almost everything, the reasons, but I'd like to be fair about this.
Pass.
Okay, thank you. Then we're, we're back at it with the board. Any further comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice President Corolla?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
No.
Director Fletcher?
No.
Director Kella?
No.
President Hatt?
Yes. The motion fails, two, three.
Can we, can we do another motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to increase George's salary by 3% and Kevin's by 1.5%. Base salary effective July 1st, 2015.
I'll second your motion. I sure, I sure just like to jump straight to the vote.
Figures?
But I will ask for discussion.
Quite honestly, do we have to have public discussion on the exact same topic we've been talking about?
Well, it's a different motion, though. Yeah, you should. But I need to know what the figures are.
It's about $4,200 for George.
Yeah, exactly.
And, uh-
Kevin's about 28.
No.
A little more?
Well, yeah, yeah, about that, I guess.
I think it's about, so.
So 113.
Am I wrong?
1.5 times.
Yeah, so it's less?
142.
Less than 28.
He's 112.
112, yeah.
I think, not sure.
So every percentage is $1,000. $1,100, actually.
Kevin's is about 1681 added on to that, so, yeah.
And what's George's?
George's is going to be 100.
About 4,200.
Yeah, about 4,200, yeah.
I think.
Total, okay.
Give, give or take.
48.
Was that right?
I guess, I didn't-
42, 66. 4,280.
Refresh my memory, and I have it written down here somewhere. Are we, what, what percentage did we give?
Union's on COLA.
They gave, you guys gave 1.5% since September.
Yeah.
See, I was the one that was pushing.
They are on COLA.
I, I was the one that put, really pushing that.
Social security.
And the board went along with it just simply because of this package here. That the union, and I have a union member, as a matter of fact, and for the staff, I belong, belong to one big union right now and I've been on two or three, plus I've been trained by unions. California Teachers Association and others. And they, they traditionally wanted 4%. Well, all you had to do was look at our bottom line and we couldn't do that. So we went with the next thing and they came in quite a bit cheaper. Because that's one of the things that public agencies have a reluctance to do, is look at the bottom line. Well, I look at the bottom line, okay?
No, no, I wanted to know, oh, it's 14, 1427, okay.
So are we finished with our calculations and mumblings?
Well, you need the public, don't you?
Lauren wants to say something.
So, let, yeah, I'll, I'll be back out there. Let's, let's be clear where we are. So the motion is 3% for George, 1.5% for Kevin. Salary increases permanently affect his base salary. And the cost for George is like $4,250.
80.
Okay. And for Kevin was 1,600.
No, 1427, wasn't it?
No, 1,600 and, 114 is, is what he'd be up to.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, about 16 and change.
16.
Okay, so that's where we are. Any further comments from the board before I go to the public? Yes, Bill?
Uh, I know you're working real hard, Seth, and I respect you for that. But you're also sending a terrible message to our employees, so.
No, I don't think we, I think I am because actually, the employees were getting pretty decent raises right along the line. They were pretty high percentages. In those times when you guys kept saying things were so bad, our employees just kept trucking right along and that was the deal that was made through the union. But, um, I don't believe that we're in, the state wants all our water. The state's mandating what we have to do with our water. But our water situation is really not that bad up at that lake. Um, we're doing a lot better than probably 95% of the reservoirs in California. And as far as financially, well, we can use 2,000. We can just keep going back there and going back there. And gosh, back 1920 when the depression happened, boy, it was a bad time then too. Not gonna keep going backwards. I'm not gonna keep looking at those numbers. Things are better than they were five years ago. And that is our business. Every other business I talk to is going strong these days. So the choices people make as to where they're taking their share of that pie, I can't argue with their logic and what they're doing. But, um, due to some comments that I heard out here, you're right, I don't wanna lose these guys. And no, I'm not gonna compensate or, uh, not compensate them for the job I think they're doing. So, absolutely, the comments that the public made tonight, both sides, you changed my mind. So that's why I didn't vote for the thing that I presented at the beginning, which really would have been less money to the district and the public in the long run. But you're right, you changed my mind.
Thank you.
My mind's changed three or four times tonight.
My mind's changed three or four times too.
Not mine.
The more they talk, the more it changes, so.
I'm Furman. Public, would we like to have somebody that would speak to this next motion? Come on up, Lauren. And I'm gonna be back to only one bite at the apple now. I gotta get back on board.
Lauren Harvey, thank you.
I'd just like to emphasize that bad times, we should cut back a little bit. And if the board truly believes that not by rewarding these gentlemen this year is gonna cause them to leave, then I believe they have a fiduciary and a moral obligation to start looking for replacements at this time. If you think those two gentlemen are so iffy that they're gonna leave if you don't give them a bonus this year, and not simply understand, just thank you, you've done a good job and times are tough, then I think we should be, I think the board should definitely be looking for replacements for them. Because if what you're really saying is unless we give them a bonus, those two gentlemen are gonna leave us. One thing, I'm sure you haven't talked to their wives. And second thing is, is we need to look for replacements for them. So that's, I'd just like to say that, you know, I know it's gonna be a three to two vote. I understand that, and that's the way it goes. But really, I hope the public boycotts you gentlemen who vote for this as businesses so that you understand the feel that we get when we have to pay this, because you're gonna go to the ratepayers soon for extra money. And you're today giving away money. And you're gonna go to the ratepayers within a few months and ask for a raise because you haven't got enough money. But yet, you have the good conscience to sit here tonight to give away money, knowing full well that a couple of months down the road, you're gonna have to ask the public for a raise. It doesn't make any sense. How do you justify that morally? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? There being none, we'll come back to the board. Any further discussion or comments from the board members? Roll call vote, please.
All right.
Yes?
All we're gonna bring this out is we're gonna wait till tomorrow on this thing. But looking at the bottom line, what you're doing is looking at the bottom line on here. In twenty, and this is on page fifteen of this year's budget. In oh-nine-ten, of restricted and non-restricted cash, we had ten million dollars. What we had. And then you can watch it go down, and I'm sure they can't bring it up here. And by twenty sixteen, there's going to be a little bit, a little under two thousand dollars of restricted. And that won't even be there, because that's already gone to AECOM for the project, you see. So I've looked at here, gave you a pretty good example of it. It's all public information. And you look on this one here, and you'll see what I'm talking about. So that's where I'm coming from, you know. I've just thought, hell, I'd like to give them a hundred thousand dollar bonus.
You know what? I'd like to make comment.
Was that a motion?
No, it's not a motion.
How much were eggs back in two thousand and ten?
Well, let's...
How much were eggs now? Things are gonna go up in price.
Let's not start a conversation. I'll let you talk.
I'm talking about the bottom line of the books, in case.
Okay, any further comments? Seth?
I'm good. I'm ready.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice President Corolla?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Boy.
He wants to go last.
Yeah, I wanna go last. Yes.
Director Fletcher?
No.
Director Kella?
No.
President Hadd?
Yes. Motion passes three-two. And I think we are finished with item new business.
Thank you. I do appreciate it.
You're welcome, gentlemen.
I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the consideration to answer Mr. Harvey here. I have given back. All those years that I took less than every other employee of this district percentage-wise, I gave back. And I continue to do my job, and I will continue to do it and do it well.
Well, I'm not real sure that I believe that.
Yeah.
All right, so I just want you to know that I'm gonna be watching you. And if I see you slacking off, I'm gonna have to bring it to the board's attention.
I don't either. I think unless we give them a raise, we won't do it, Joe. Thank you very much. I really do.
I'm gonna keep my eyes on you, too, Kevin.
Well, you're being a little facetious, Hut.
You think?
That's normal, what these people think about you. But I have no question if we give the bonus or not, I don't think they would slack off at all, because they're very competent, dedicated individuals.
I do.
So you're full of bull splatter.
Nope, that's not being facetious. I do. I think it's a subconscious impact that will take root, just like a cavity. It's gonna brew underneath that crown for a long time, underneath the enamel, and they're gonna rot from the inside out. That's what we're, what we're, the seeds we're planting here. Anyhow.
Ten o'clock, let's move forward.
Time for a board recess.
Let's move forward.
No, at ten o'clock, we gotta get done. Okay, we're gonna go to committee reports. Larry, you're the man for the Butte Local Agency Formation Commission.
Right. Okay, now we're the, I've been looking through here on my papers.
Good night. Thank you for your participation, Ward.
Okay, we met on the second of July. And we had public hearings, and we finalized two annexations in Chico, which have taken over thirty years to do. But we did give them a five-year time to do it, five years to do it. And no one spoke against it, but one person got up and wanted to know why it took so long to do it. Because he wanted it done a long time ago. And we told him it was politics and money. And then we did a community service district diversion of service. What we did is, this special district was doing water and lights. And they talked Del Oro into taking over their water. And for seventy-five thousand dollars. And they're only gonna bring lights now. So Del Oro's gonna be doing their water for them. And then the other thing is July thirty-first, and we're gonna have an executive board meeting in San Diego, of which I'm going to attend, of which PID does not pay for it all. LAFCO pays for it. And I get an awful lot of training from LAFCO at no expense to PID. So that's one of the reasons I didn't use any of my, very little of my training money last year. That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Finance Committee, Director Duncan, you're up to bat again. We already spoke to this briefly, but I'll let you go ahead and get a...
Well, I don't think we need to say much more.
No.
Because we didn't do much.
We're going to then the Community Relations Committee, Directors Corolla and Hunt. I'm the chairperson. We met, we talked about business, we adjourned. Would you like to mention anything, Seth?
No, you just covered it. Yeah, we talked about stuff.
Thank you.
You covered it.
We're going to General Manager's report.
Well, wait a minute. You didn't do anything?
No, we talked about...
I gave my report. And that's what I'm given.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. I wanna see the minutes.
Minutes are open for, yeah, open for your reading.
You don't have my written report, because I wasn't here last week. Our water supply situation is still very good, nine feet from spilling at Paradise, which is ninety percent of our average storage and eighty percent of our total storage. We've got eighteen point six months of supply remaining, based on the average of the last three years of usage. Or the two thousand twelve to fourteen use, sorry. We had a forty-six point four percent reduction in June. So we far exceeded our thirty-six percent requirement by the state. Unfortunately, it'll probably rain this winter and all spill, but that's a whole nother world.
We're hoping, we're praying.
I have, let me go back where my notes go. Had a couple of things to say.
How often do you change the thing on the sign on Skyway? I thought it said eighty-two percent the other day.
It varies. It's usually every few days. I don't know, I don't have my notes. But things are going well. We've got all the pipeline installed on that project on the south end of town. Now we're working on, preparing for tie-ins and service lines. Cruz doing a really good job with that. And that's it. I'll answer any questions.
I was broken.
Beautiful. Yes, sir.
I noticed the trucks came in tonight. I was here a little after six, and trucks were still coming out of the field. How much overtime are we paying now that we're short of staff out in the field?
There's no overtime attributed to shortage of staff.
But we are paying overtime?
We always pay overtime, of course. We have a contract to pay overtime. So they were on overtime for a leak call or some other emergency.
It wasn't from having three less utility workers?
No, I can tell you right now, there's absolutely no overtime has been expended because of the reduction in staff. Zero.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other?
What happened to that water guy, the guy that took the water from us?
I think he got cited. I don't remember what the...
I don't know that I ever received final resolution from the agency.
We're not gonna get reimbursed for the water?
Restitution.
Yeah.
He's reducing his water at the meter. I'm giving it back that way. Yeah, I don't know. It was only, that was a small amount of money.
Right, okay.
Have you had any need to enforce the new regulations?
No.
Oh, yeah, I did ask the staff, you did, you get about sixty calls a week? Complaint of over-usage. Right.
Yeah. I did, that was one of the things. Ward misspoke a little bit. I gave the presentation Monday to the garden club, along with Mickey. She did an Al Ahok update. That was to about forty people. And today at lunch, I gave a talk on the drought and just general PID to a Serge Club. That was about sixty, I think he said sixty-four people. Those are really good exchanges, answers, get questions answered, and they're well received.
Where would an individual go to find out the water regulations?
Our website.
Website.
Is it on the web?
Yep.
What's it under?
It's on one of the front page banners.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. I haven't been on there in a while.
Tanya's got it over there.
Tanya's got them in her office.
Free for your public taking. And those are in our little kiosk things that are located different places.
Because I told George about it. Somebody told me that they were complaining about people, and they didn't think anything was being done.
Yeah, we've responded. That's one of our reports, and I'll get the data from what we report to the state.
Right.
I have to collect it, because this gentleman here is gonna email me and ask me for it.
And then I called you about the, somebody in Redding said that the state required that they have a water cop. And you said that, no, we have to enforce the rules, but we don't have to have a person.
We don't have to have a special.
Right, which is saving a lot of money for the district.
Okay, thank you, George. Legal report?
Two topics. I'll try to be brief. First, on the test claim, we set a trial date for February. Unfortunately, the Superior Court is so logjammed, that's the quickest we could get one. So you, once you set a...
What year? What year?
Twenty sixteen. Good, should've clarified that. But once you set a hearing date, you back up dates from that. So, well, we have a briefing schedule, and I don't think there's gonna be much in the way of an update or an input from you as a board, probably until October, November. Maybe September. The other topic I wanted to touch on is curtailment developments. You'll recall last month, I talked about how the Water Board had curtailed pre-fourteen water rights through a nineteen oh-three priority thing. That triggered a number of lawsuits, at least five that I'm aware of, that I'm tracking. And the lawsuits sought injunctions. Basically, the argument is they ought to be able to continue diverting, because what the Water Board did was not lawful for a variety of reasons. Well, the response to those injunction requests by the Attorney General's Office representing the Water Board was, it kind of threw the water lawyers for a loop, including myself. What they said was, no, no, these are not curtailment orders. These are merely advisory. So we're just kind of a friendly heads-up from your neighborhood State Water Resource Control Board. And...
Yeah.
And they've since had a pretty significant loss in Sacramento Superior Court that not only on the pre-fourteen curtailment, but on the post-nineteen fourteen curtailment, which PID has two post-nineteen fourteen water rights, that they have, because a water right is a property right, you have to have a due process and an evidentiary hearing and process before you actually curtail. And while that kind of tickles me, because I don't like kind of some of the directions that the Water Board has given recently, I'm taking more of a, I'm concerned. And my concern is, is the Water Board gonna use these losses as an opportunity to go to the legislature, the governor's office, and say, boy, this antiquated, hundred-and-fifty-year-old water right system just doesn't work anymore. We need something that's more like Australia. You know, everybody goes dry on the same day in the entire state of California. So that, you know, we're, we in the water industry are walking a fine line, I think. We like the priority system. It's what makes sense. You know, communities, Paradise has grown up around these water rights. We wouldn't want that system that we know and understand to be tossed aside for something that we may not like. So it's a fine line between challenging the Water Board and then pushing them into a corner where they feel like they have to seek a legislative solution. So that's my report. I'm working with, on that exact issue, I'm working with NACWA, Northern California Water Association. There's kind of a group of, well, let's see, my firm and three others. So a group of about five attorneys. NACWA is kind of a Aqua spinoff, but for Northern California. So we're working on trying to bolster and maintain the water right priority system, and at the same time, kind of have the Water Board be sane. So that's my report, unless there's questions.
How many people are on the Water Board?
Just five.
How long have they been on the board?
I don't know that they're appointed. You know, they go, appointed by the governor, go through confirmation.
Each governor, every new governor? Or do they just stay over?
Well, it's four-year terms, so I don't think every new, they're staggered terms. So the governor may be able to appoint two or three, depending on how the terms land up. But, yeah, that's actually something that I would like to see changed. I don't think the Water Board ought to be appointed. I think they ought to be elected by geographic unit. I think it'd make people a lot more comfortable and have trust in that institution.
How do you get it changed?
Legislation. Bill?
Doug, let's be clear.
I was reading, I've read so many articles and stuff that, I think the AG actually has stated that the Water Board was acting in areas that they shouldn't have acted, and they have no, maybe I should talk about advisory. But, you know, so it was kind of interesting. It's been so long, and I've read so many other things since then. But then the Attorney General kind of said that the Water Board was way off pace.
Well, they, yeah, in a way. And you wonder what exactly they're doing. They, I actually think they have a decent argument that they have the legal ability to curtail. And why they backtracked, I have no idea. Are they deliberately doing it to kind of set up, to put stressors on the priority system? Because we know that the environmental community and the Water Board is heavily influenced by the environmental community. Does not like the water right priority system. You know, they don't like this idea where a miner in eighteen fifty-five posted a notice and diverted the entire Butte Creek and acquired a water right that then trickled down. They just don't like that. It's antiquated.
Well, I know that one of the water, one of the big, it was a very interesting meeting. In fact, I was out here in Horville, and I gave a report on this earlier. There was two members from the board there at that, plus one of the number-two guy at the Department of Water Resources. And they said that all the water in the state is the people's water, and they're in charge of it. And of course, they must be, because of the fact that they dictated that we have a thirty-six percent savings, you know. So they really believe it's their water, whether it is or not, you know. And it was one person asked from a lake on down south, I forget where it was at. And he said, they said, as a group, we're in control of all of that, because that's our water. Well, it's the same, so it's kind of interesting. And of course, it must be, because they're dictating how much we can use.
To be determined at a later date.
Go ahead, Bill.
Dustin, I sort of got the idea that this threw out the idea that the Water Board was going to be able to arbitrarily send out bulletins to stop water diversions for different districts throughout the state. In other words, Attorney General sort of said, the way I read one interpretation, is that there was no basis for them to pass any rules to enforce it right now because of the property rights issue. And then the other thought that I've read is that they don't think any kind of punitive water bill will get through the legislature. In other words, there's very little support in the legislature for supporting the Water Board, because these legislatures have to go to their home districts and explain to people that have had their water diverted, cut off, everything else by the Water Board that just went away, and then go back and say, well, we need stronger rules for the Water Board and legislation. And I just wonder, there doesn't seem to be any political support. No politician that I know of, none up here, have come out and said, I support the Water Board, and we should have stiffer legislation. I got very much the impression that the water district won a victory. I don't know how, and it may be since you're gonna be in court to fight it out, I gather, over time. The people that were sued, that sued the Water Board, at least one injunction there or something close to it. There was a thing from Lysis on the internet this afternoon that I read, where they were talking about how the Water Board was trying to circumvent that. But it didn't look like they were sort of throwing the towel in at the same time.
So what the Water Board is now saying is they're gonna issue curtailment notices that are just kind of a friendly heads-up.
Right, that's all it is.
Just suggestion cards.
Our analysis indicates that there is not enough water under your priority of right. So... So, and then what the Water Board is saying is, we're not telling you to curtail, but if you don't curtail, and you don't actually have water available under your date of priority, that's an unauthorized diversion, which, you know, we've talked about that before. The unauthorized diversion penalties would bankrupt PID. They're, uh, a thousand dollars a day, twenty-five hundred dollars-
And that's legislated already.
Yes. So, they're not telling you to curtail, but they're saying, we may prosecute you if you don't curtail.
And then the districts are suing against them, right?
Yep.
Because they're saying it's water, it's individual rights, and we have to supply our customers. And then there's one city in Southern California that is all on wells, and they're telling the Water Board that you don't have jurisdiction under wells, and what are you doing, asking us to limit when we have plenty of, in our aquifer to supply our town? And I gather they're suing over it.
Yeah. Or they're adjudicated, and the groundwater basin is adjudicated, it says exactly how much you can take out every year for each person that has a well, and the Water Board's telling them, no. I mean, if, I, I've told you before, um, there's many arguments we could've made to thumb our nose at the Water Board and say, we're not conserving 36%. Many arguments. And thankfully, it looks like, so far, so good, we're not gonna have to, you are not gonna have to consider whether you're gonna have to raise those arguments in defense of some prosecution by the Water Board.
No, we have plenty of water, that's the strange thing, our customers are-
Yeah.
-reading everything in the newspapers, and yet we have plenty of water.
I'm concerned, we go into next year, and they're gonna go, well, you did 20 whatever percent we did last year, so we want 36 this year, and then, oh, you did 36, okay, so now we want 52, and they're just gonna keep raising it if we go into another year of drought, which inevitably will happen.
Yeah, they're, they're actually, they're, if you were-
The better your performance is, it seems like the more that they expect you to-
Yeah, the signs on the wall are, they want kind of a uniform gallon per person per day. Whether it's somewhere between 55 and 100, which would be really tough for us, I think some customers would probably do that, but-
Yeah.
Um, that's where they're kind of projecting, is, we want all water suppliers to have this very low gallons per person per day.
I, I think what we're gonna end up with is, the old saying in this state, whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over some. And that's what we're headed at right now, we're fighting and so forth. We're pretty fortunate to be able to sit on the sidelines and watch what's going on.
My concern is what, just like what Dustin was saying, is that, that, okay, so the rules that are set right now, they can't utilize those, so they're just gonna go to the legislature and change the rules, we'll just change the game, so that now we can do whatever we want with that, and that's where, but that's gonna be, I would imagine that to be an extreme battle.
I don't know, you know, it's, it's always dangerous to count votes.
Yeah, no.
But, if we go through, the hysteria, you know, I sat through about five Water Board meetings, and they're brutal, but the hysteria that they've kind of created around this drought, unnecessarily, it's some, some justified, some unnecessary. But, if we have another, a fifth year of drought, I, I think what the legislature could do, or what the Water Board could do, you, there's no predictability. They could do anything.
Yeah.
You know, Australia had a somewhat similar, I actually had a call with some Australian farmers and, and folks that are just like you, that run, they call them something like irrigation companies, or some, it's very, imagine that in an Australian accent, it's interesting. But they had a very similar water right system, that in year four or five of the drought, just disappeared. The legis, and a very similar, the north, northern part of Australia is heavily agriculture, less urbanized. The southern part of Australia is heavily urbanized, and they just, the urban areas just totally outvoted them. And now they're stuck with this system, it's hard for me to understand, but what it sounds like is, year to year, they don't know what they're gonna get. If it's a wet year, they'll get a good allocation, if it's a dry year, it goes right by them.
Yeah.
I'd like to comment, because I've met rice farmers over the years from Australia, and they have a unique water metering system, which we don't have. They actually meter the amount of water, not mechan, it's a mechanical system, into each rice field. They don't hold water all year, they do what we call upland rice, that they flush the rice fields, like irrigating a field, give it a flush, and give it a flush, and so forth. But they don't hold four to six inches of water that we do in our rice fields. So they've lived through this drought situation, it's almost a continuous thing. And, yes, New South Wales, which is the primary agricultural, and then Queensland is down below it, and that's where you're talking about, two different states, but it sounds like the national legislation went through Parliament, and, uh, in Canterbury. And then Western Australia has tremendous acreages of dry land, they don't have much water there at all. They do a million and a half of wheat, dry land wheat, interestingly, a lot of no-till. But, the water system is, has been completely different than what we have here, from the very beginning, even if the National Parliament now is involved in it, to regulate the water system. I don't think we're gonna see the same push in California, because the people that are getting hit right now with regulations, a lot of them live in the Metropolitan Water District, and that's where some of their subsidiary water districts are really getting cut bad on water. And I don't think they're gonna have the political will to change the state laws right now.
Dustin, can I ask you?
Go ahead.
Quick question. Does the Water Board meetings still available to the public?
Yeah. They're allowed to, the, just like PID on some topics, they can go into closed session, but they can sit in, and their meetings are actually webcast. You can't participate currently when they're webcast, you can if you're physically there, but, um, very entertaining.
I think it's, uh, twenty, thirty years ago. They were entertaining then.
Yeah. Bring a sack lunch.
I bet, I was gonna say, I bet it's a complete circus now, so, yeah.
Yeah, I brought about fifty or sixty people there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you-
All right.
-for the legal update. We are looking at staff and billing reports, they're-
I have a couple of things.
Excuse me?
I have a couple of things to verbally report on the staff and billing report.
Oh, yes, okay.
Um, I've got this up on the screen, and it, it really doesn't come through this computer well, but I wanted to explain it before I sent it to all you, emailed it to you. This highlights the parcels in the district, and it's just kind of educational for the Board members to get a feel. But when you look at it, the darker the green, those are the ones that save the most water from 2013 June to 2015 June. And the darkest blue are the ones that saved, that did not save water in the worst way. It's really hard to explain, and that's why I wanted to-
They went past the curve the opposite direction.
Yeah, they didn't lose, they didn't save water, they used more than 2013, and this is increasing in colors, increasing in how bad they're doing. But don't take it parcel by parcel, there's some that could've been a vacant parcel in June of 2013, and now if someone's there. But I'll send it out to you to take a look. It doesn't show up really well here, but there's a lot of green on there, and it's pretty darn good to see a lot of green.
Now, see, when you have lowest water savings in the green, too, it doesn't necessarily mean that they were high-water users, just means they didn't save.
They saved water, not as high a percent, the lighter is green.
Exactly, okay.
Um, so I'll send that out to you, and then, I did find my other note that fell into here. The bills, the July bills should have 2013 comparisons to them, with our customers. And then, uh, by the end of the month, Aqua Hawk's trend line will be based on 2013.
Beautiful.
Is there any way you can put on the bills, attaboys?
Not without a cost.
Oh, okay. I was hoping you could just put your button.
We would have to pay for additional programming to be able to do that.
Oh, okay. You don't wanna do that, then?
I, I haven't looked at our bill this month, in fact, we may not have received it, but actually, he's gonna be comparing 13 with-
Yes, should, supposed to compare 13 to 15.
So it should be pretty easy to tell.
Yep.
It's great.
Okay.
Beautiful, that was a great staff report.
Any other questions or discussion about staff reports?
Um, I wanted to comment on some of the things like I usually do. On page 66, on the PID lake comparison from 2005-15.
Awesome.
We're still well ahead of where we were last year.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need a bigger chart.
That's where our raises came from.
We need a bigger chart to go that high, you think, so?
Yeah, because it's gonna go out past the end of the chart, I foresee it.
It's gonna go over 40,000, huh?
Well, I was up there last Friday, and a lot of people were putting kayaks into the lake, and quite a bit of activity.
Because there's no water in Oroville.
Well, it's, it's not that there's no water, it's that you have to walk three miles to get to it from the marina, you know, so.
And page 68-
Kayaks are heavy.
The amount of leakage has gone up a little bit in the district. I'm glad to hear we're working on fixing by points now.
That's, that's no.
Percent's gone up.
Percent's gone up, but not the-
Volume's pretty flat.
The red is the one you look at.
Unaccounted? Well, what's the blue for, then?
The blue is percent.
Percentage.
Okay, well, the, oh, we still talk about this, okay.
Right, the less you produce that.
I look at the percentage, and you guys look at the volume.
Red, red line's the one you want.
Well, I've been looking at the blue line, I like the blue line, though.
You like leaks going up.
And then the next page, Aqua Hawk users have gone up, it's probably close to about 2,000 of our customers, or 20%.
On Aqua, does that- It's just a really huge jump.
Is it every meter? I mean, I signed up for four meters. Did, does that make four?
No, that's one user for four meters.
Oh, so it's only-
You only count one instead of four of that number?
Oh, shoot, I was hoping I'd get four.
So it's more than-
Do they charge a dollar for each meter, though? Right?
Ten cents.
A dollar.
Oh, ten cents.
Ten cents.
Yeah, so you ought to count every meter, then? And not just-
They don't charge anything, the district pays ten cents.
No, but I mean, we're paying, uh, it's not compared-
I'll ask Nikki if she can get the same chart with number of meters monitored by Aqua Hawk.
That would be better, because this is misleading.
We might be up at 1,989.
Yeah.
We are, I guarantee it.
Page 71 would be the next one, because this shows us how our income's gone down. And I'll ask Kevin to tell us how much we've lost, or gone down from last year.
It's in my report.
Huh?
It'll be in my report.
In your report that's coming? Okay. And the water treatment plant, I don't remember the number, I've gone by it already, but you can see that the water treatment's about half of what it was last year, going through the plant. It's hardly running the plant at all. I was up there Saturday, or Friday, and asked about the volumes, and, because it was on the wall, and the reply I got was, we're way down, you don't have to worry about it, we're not even near capacity, about half of what the capacity of the plant is.
We still run five, six million?
Four, is what I was told, something like four.
Yeah, when it cooled back down.
Well, last week was probably four, because it was 70 degrees outside.
Yeah, by tomorrow, we'll probably be back six, I think we hit up to eight, I think you said, at one.
And then, on page 76, uh, Ken Hunt was down to 761 now, I understand, after the first is a-
You're, you're, you're out, you're into the financial report.
What, am I into the financial report?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I do wanna see that, when we go back.
Oh, I did, yeah, okay.
I lost money, and I didn't even do anything.
And, uh, we got the bar, the bar graphs and all that, so, okay.
Someone dropped, someone's-
I move, we accept the staff and billing reports for 2015.
I second that.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion amongst the Board? Does the public have any comments or items they'd like to bring up on those reports?
I always enjoy the staff reports, they're generally always very well-done, it gives you a real update on what's happening.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? None, passes 5-0. Treasurers' report?
Yeah, my Redding report, cash position's at 3.29 million. 1.6 millions, the unrestricted portion. The IIC Director, Fleischer, has said the 1.22 will continue to trickle down from the capacity fees based on the aid contract, as they work, that's where we're paying that out of. Operational standpoint, service fee revenue's right on budget, but consumption income is We are evaluating rates, we're hot and heavy on that. We're working with State Revolving Fund for the financing agreement to get finalized. The auditor was here for inventory, and it went very smoothly. They'll probably be back similar to last year later in the year, and our budget is going to be created. So here's the graph that shows what we're down. So, actual, we're at 1.6 million, we budgeted 1.9 million. So we're approximately down 300,000, 288,768.25, based on our budget.
And that's for the full year?
That's the whole year, that's it.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, yeah. July through June 30th. And you can see that we collected last year, we were at 2 million, we did go down a little bit in our estimate and budget, but we didn't realize what the state was going to do to us.
If this keeps up for July and August, is, do you have any idea what kind of monies we're looking at?
I would say, last year, or July actually wasn't, was about on budget, but I would say we'd probably lose 70,000 per month, a kick or take.
Thank you.
Seventy thousand dollars per month.
Kick or take.
That's, in the normal, whatever normal is, at the end of the year, we generally always had half a million left over.
That's what we budgeted, correct?
Yeah.
There's your travel budget, that you're getting expected.
We spent that, we spent that- Yeah, I know, really, that was pretty cheap for that.
This will reset next year, so this is all done and claimed. Speaking of education, the Special District Association's having their annual conference, that's the one that Ken and me and George went to last year. Ken came back with a lot of very good ideas, I thought it was a great conference. So this year, they're having it September 21st through the 24th, and it's in Monterey. If any director is interested in going, please let me know, or Georgiana know, so we can make those-
You know what days those are? What day is that?
September 21st through the 24th.
21st through the 20th.
I would block out the 20th through the 25th. Unless you wanna go back to the 21st, but normally it starts with the 20th.
Do you remember, is that going to be at DeSylmar?
It's going to be in Monterey.
Yeah.
In the Mar, the Marriott.
It used, it used to be those kind of, I've been to quite a number of, in DeSylmar, you know? So maybe that's not an old rural place now, but it was-
They still do things there, but now, like, conferences, I think-
It was a great place to hold conferences.
Yeah, they have a conference center there now, it's-
Fantastic.
They utilize pretty-
I noticed that Aqua is having their meeting where we, where Cal-Lapco had ours last year, in Ontario, the same place.
Aqua is having theirs in Palm Springs.
The one I saw-
I was waiting for the 29 Palms Conference, because that's what I wanted to see.
I saw one that was in Ontario.
Yeah. I don't know, it's probably a special conference.
Yeah, they're having their annual conference, it's in, or their semi-annual, the fall conference is in Palm Springs, and it's like around the 1st of December.
The one I saw, I guess it's next year, the one I saw was gonna be in Ontario, yeah.
Um, speaking of Aqua, Aqua released their medical rates for the current, the coming 2016 year. And the Classic went up 9% across the board, Advantage went up 9% across the board, and the account-based help went up 6%, 6.2% across the board.
I thought Obamacare was doing a lower insurance rate.
So is that, okay, so the account-based one will be putting 6% more in this next year?
6.2.
Is that, we'll be putting in 6% more?
Correct, so you, under the contract, you absorb the full premium of the account-based, like, you're capped.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And you kept-
Only the health, only the health savings one, the other one, uh-
You kept the Classic, and did you kept the Advantage, too?
Uh, well, the Advantage was under the cap.
Right. But now it's gonna be over there.
Be over the cap, so, yeah, there is a cap on- Over the cap, so yeah, there is a cap on it.
What is the cap on the classic?
I knew you were gonna ask that. I think it's seventeen.
Seems ninety-something or?
Next month, 'cause we just got these, they'll give you a report.
Oh, okay. Maybe it's, maybe I'm thinking for the-
In other words, our health insurance is up about nine percent?
Yep.
Twelve percent, it's got a nine percent on the two plan, six percent on the account-based health.
With the top plan, it's nine percent.
We're gonna see it all next month anyway, right?
Yes.
Let's not waste our time tonight.
I just wanted to again give you a heads up. None of the coverage has changed though. So all coverage stays.
Well, that's at least good.
Still the same program?
Same program.
Our cheeseburger didn't get any smaller.
Just cost more.
Every, every time I go into someplace, they ask me when I retired.
Do ice cream come?
And I said, I didn't retire. But every place is asking me that. When did you retire, Mr. Duncan?
That's because they know your birth date.
So that's, that is it, so.
Okay.
I have one. Kevin?
Yes?
You know, you know how we, we added in here, uh, the different contracts and how much we've paid? I, I don't see that here this year, this month.
Oh, you're right. I apologize.
If you'd put that, if you'd put that back in, I, I really enjoyed it.
Yep.
It was very beneficial. I appreciate, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
I move we accept the treasurer's report for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second.
We have the motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Any public comments on the treasurer's report? All those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, none, passes five zero. Director's comments. Bill, we'd like to start with you, please.
What about, um, we've got the map on here on it right away and so forth with, uh-
That's a closed session item, Bill?
Oh, that's a closed, I'm sorry. Boy, I'm really, you tell, tell, I didn't really go through this thing. My comments as a director is I think our board tries to do the right thing, and we work it out. And I think the district is well-run. I know people are well pleased with the service they're receiving out in the field of the, the men and so forth. And, and I'll keep nicking away at things I think need to be tended to in the district. That's just the way I serve on boards. I did the same thing on the cemetery board. And I think that's basically my job, is to go, and I did that there too. I don't ask anybody's permission. I just go out and look at things and see what I can find, and not find. And by and large, most things are well, but I see a lot of things that could possibly be improved, and I didn't mention all of them tonight. I think that the district overall's fine. I just think that you guys don't have a clue on the financials, what we're doing, and how dangerous we find ourselves in a cash flow position before long if we don't either cut or we put out a rate increase and debate that with the community. But we're not in very good shape.
Done? Well, I think the PID is a very good district, and we put out a quality product, and, uh, we, we do a lot of different things. But you know me and my bottom line that I talked about in that particular category. I think every staff member that we have that I know, and I only talk to Kevin and a couple others, but not without getting permission, are very talented, dedicated individuals. And that's why our district is so good. I agree, I appreciate being able to get my point across, whether I win, lose, or draw, you know, but it's kinda nice doing that. And I, I've watched this district since, uh, nineteen forty-three, as a matter of fact. My wife was working for him in fifty-six and seven, when it was, that was the whole firehouse here. And, uh, Ally was an engineer, and it was quite interesting happening. Got two board members recalled because of going after some water rights, the Sterling Bluff Water Rights, P G D has them now. And, uh, I really was hot on that one, 'cause I'd done some work for the diamond match, and, uh, and it didn't happen. And, uh, I wish it had have, 'cause we'd had water running down the Hendricks Canal right now into our pond. And, uh, good. So, I enjoy doing my thing. Thank you, Ken.
Thank, thank you. Larry?
Uh, I wanted to thank the district for getting me this ID card. You guys better look at it. It tells when you're gonna expire. I've got till eighteen. You guys, a couple of you guys-
I'm having my picture changed, so I don't know what card you're looking at.
I'm earlier than that.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna expire before that. I'm sure glad I got three more years. And then, uh, I, I did join Aquahawk today, this year, this week. And it took less time to join Aquahawk than it did to get a check from Paradise to Sacramento and back to me. It took four days for, for a check to, that's pretty good. That's less than-
Leave Paradise and come back to Paradise?
Yeah, went to Par- Sacramento and came back to me. Took four days. That's only twelve and a half cents a day. That's a pretty good rate, huh? Anyway, uh, I feel that if you're a director and you want something done, you should put it in writing. And if you don't get it, don't do that. And it doesn't get done, then it's your fault. So, there.
Thank you. Zach?
Uh, I got four little things. Um, first off, I'd like to thank, um, Georgiana, and, 'cause she was the one who I called and got it going. I was walking past my neighbor's meter, talking to one neighbor, and then I looked down at one of the meter boxes, and I noticed that it was awfully wet around it. I opened up the meter box. The thing was basically holding a few gallons of water inside it. Um, I called Georgiana. They were out there the next day, fixed it all up. Everything was good. All the neighbors, the neighbor whose lot it was, she's just like, gosh, they were so nice. The people I was talking to next door, they were, boy, those guys were just so nice and did such a great job. Put it all back, cleaned up the mess. Um, so, great job to everybody involved. Um, what a great job, the, the second thing, what a great job the district's done. Um, our customers, their efforts in achieving the goal of reducing our water usage. Um, it's great as a community, not great on our financials, but, um, as a community, um, I think we're far exceeding what other communities are doing out there. And we have a lot of things, Aquahawk, um, and just public knowledge. Our Public Relations, Public Information Committee has made sure that people know what our intention is, that we're not trying to beat you guys up. We just need to save some water, and I think it's going really, really well. Um, number three, rate increase is coming. We knew that four years ago. We need to get on the, the train that says, there is a rate increase coming, and we're gonna have to request that from the public. So, just like four years ago, we kept saying a lot of if, if we do a race increase, if we do a rate increase. Four years ago, we knew it was coming, so we're here. We're at five years. And then, uh, fourth thing, I'd like to thank the public for their participation tonight, both pro and con. You absolutely swayed my mind on what I was thinking when it related to some of the issues, so I appreciate the public being here. That's it.
Thank you. I have no comments. We're going to, uh, take up a real property negotiations. The property subject to negotiations is the easement agreement or boundary line adjustment for this particular APN number. Uh, it's with Sierra Pacific Industries. And that is what we are going to be talking about in closed session, because it's a nego- a property negotiation. Uh, the, so before we go into closed session, does any, and any of the public like to speak to this or make any comments about it? It's kinda tough. There's not much there, but certainly, now we find out why you're here. We could have-
Five hours later, um, my name is Joe Boisey. I'm the, uh, property owner that, and you have easement, uh, through my property for Boat Ram Two, and, uh, I believe, uh, the subject here is, uh, uh, gonna be dealing with, uh, the property next mine. Uh, so I just wanted to share with you that I had a, an interesting visit with the, uh, Sierra Pacific forester who was, uh, coming out of the woods and spraying trees, as you probably see, with those white, white marks on the trees. And, uh, so that people don't get confused, my understanding is, is that if it has a white mark, it's gonna be saved. Um, but he assured me that this was what, fire abatement program, but I, I think it's a, a logging operation. Um, so I just wanted to kind of, you know, I'm concerned, because, you know, as I drive to the dam, um, I saw that, you know, there's this huge pile of, uh, debris still there. And, uh, and he was telling me that, well, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna go through this, and we're gonna clean it up, and it's gonna look like a park, and, you know, we're gonna chip everything out, and, uh, we're gonna haul it out to, apparently, they're gonna take it to, I don't know, towards Lake Elmen or somewhere. Um, that's what, that's what he said. They're gonna haul it out. So I'm just, you know, concerned, um, you know, of what PIT's gonna do, uh, you know, if they wanna buy the, buy the property or, or they're gonna work on the easement. It's just one of those things that, uh, I'm not so sure that Sierra Pacific is gonna do, you know, if there, if that pile's been there for a while, and then there's this other pile on Kootenay, Inc. Um, I just wanna know if, you know, what your concerns are, uh, what they're gonna do, and, uh, what PIT is, you know, if they're gonna have any input. So, I just wanna kinda make sure that, you know, I live there. And it's, uh, kind of ironic, because I'm not a PIT customer.
We, we have an easement through your property by this now, is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah, my property surrounds Boat Ram Two.
Yeah, that's where we're gonna, the state is, if we get the easement from Sierra Pacific or whatever happens there, we'll develop that with a grant from the state.
Right, I understand that. But my concern is, is that from North Lake to Boat Ram Two, that you want that easement. Well, there's, from the road to the lake is land, but then there's that piece from the road back to my property, and then, you know, going back towards Lakefront. And all of that is, uh, you know, uh, Sierra Pacific land. So I'm, I'm wanting to find out if the intention is to just, you know, just get an easement or wanna buy the land, you know, to wherever the, you know, PIT property ends, you know, from the lake, or are you gonna buy the whole parcel? You know, what's gonna happen?
Just to be clear, both, both options are on the table. That's what we're, this is our first discussion about it.
Okay, because, you know, you know, are they gonna log it, then you wanna buy it, or you're gonna, you know, you're gonna buy it, and then you're gonna log it, you know, you know, I don't know. It's just kind of like all up in the air, and I understand you guys are gonna have to, you know, figure out what's going on. It's just that, uh, I think it's important for, uh, me to be in the loop, 'cause I am a stakeholder. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks for coming.
If you, uh, you can wait for us to come out, or else, or else you can call George?
I don't know, but you guys, uh, okay, or what direction you're gonna get into, Mr. Butler?
Yeah, you know, sometimes, early on, and especially, you know, first meeting on this, our, our direction is, the, the statement we're gonna make is that we met and discussed this, and, uh, and we gave direction to the negotiator. But we, we probably won't divulge what type of direction. So they just-
Now, I worked on a map, and you want to say, okay, well-
Yeah. Well, I think it's good for us to hear from you anyhow, since you're, I think it's good for us to hear from you before we go in there anyhow. Yeah, 'cause you had concerns I didn't even think about, or don't know what's going on yet.
I, I can give you a copy of the map. It's just an aerial property map. That's all, that's all.
I was just concerned about whether you guys were, you know, one of, one of the whole shebang, or, or just the piece.
Don't know yet.
Yeah, okay.
You're welcome to stay, but I can almost assure you the, there's not gonna be a decision made, and whatever announcement is made, you can call the office tomorrow, and George will give it to you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, we will, we will move into closed session for real property negotiations at this time. Uh, it looks that way. We still have people-